So the subject of today's hearing is resident engagement at NYCHA. This is a broad topic, but long overdue. The last time this committee conducted oversight over any element of resident engagement was April 2019 in a hearing on tenant participation activity funds. Federal rules, otherwise known as Section 964, lay out specific requirements regarding tenant participation in housing. And I'd like to begin by reading the purpose statement of that section. The purpose of this part is to recognize the importance of resident involvement in creating a positive living environment and in actively participating in the overall mission of public housing. Actively participating. To me, this means having a meaningful voice at the table, having full representation at the table, and having decision-making power at the table. As the chair of this committee, I often hear NYCHA residents' concerns that this purpose is not met. Residents are not adequately informed about major policy decisions regarding their homes. There are also ongoing concerns about deficiencies in voting processes for choosing who will represent residents in their respective resident associations. I have actually witnessed these problems firsthand. While there may have been some steps forward, we seem to be stuck. And despite NYCHA having piloted more robust partnerships with engagements with community-based organizations showing actual improved results, these lessons seem not to stick. In preparation for this hearing, I reviewed some press articles as far back as 2015 and earlier citing the very same frustrations around resident engagement and the cycle of distrust that this particular problem perpetuates. An organized, well-represented tenant voice is one of NYCHA's greatest assets, and it also seems to be one of its greatest fears. If the authority truly seeks to preserve and improve public housing, it must lean into not only engaging, but truly empowering residents through ensuring that they are not just being heard, but they are in decision-making roles. More recently, the process around the Public Housing Trust has been peak. In the summer of 2020, when we were at the height of the pandemic, NYCHA blindsided residents by announcing this plan. Early this year, the state enacted legislation to allow the creation of the trust. And NYCHA has pointed to the fact that the version of the legislation that passes allows for resident engagement in the process. For example, this version supposedly allows tenants to vote opt-in to the trust. NYCHA is currently in the process of adopting rules for this voting procedure, but there are many issues with these proposed rules, and I expect to address these concerns today. I look forward to hearing from the NYCHA residents who have joined us this afternoon. I want to thank the incredible, committed, and talented residents who, despite little resource and support, have jumped into leadership through associations, through roundtables, through surveys, and through just standard community engagement. Over these weeks, I have heard many agencies use the word "complex" as a cover for the hard work that needs to take place. Complex as a scapegoat to avoid shifting power. Complex as a way to keep the status quo. I submit to you, there is nothing complex about empowering residents. It is a decision and a commitment. We will take engagement, but what we want is empowerment. There is nobody better situated to help the members of this committee and decision-makers at NYCHA to understand the issues so that we can ultimately work together to improve the living conditions at NYCHA. I would like to thank my staff, Christina Botejo, Edward Serna, James Niemeister, along with the Public Housing Committee staff, Arjy Son, Jose Conde, Ricky Chaula, and Dan Krup, for all the work that they've put into this hearing. In keeping with the tradition of this committee, we will now hear from the first panel of NYCHA residents, who, as I mentioned, are the best people to frame the issues that we are looking to discuss today. We are talking about resident engagement. Let's engage the residents first. I will now turn it over to the committee council to call up the witnesses. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from... We'll now hear from Aixsa Torres, Manuel Martinez, Marquise Jenkins, Anne Valdez, and joining us on Zoom, Denise Allen and Barbara McFadden. You may begin when you're ready.
My name is Aixsa Torres. I am the Resident Association President of Alfred E. Smith Houses. I am also the Chair of Manhattan South District Council of Presidents. I stand before you on resident management. Under the 964 regulations, we're supposed to be included from conception, and that's not the case, right? And the issue that we're having with this preservation is that we were not included from conception, and now we're at this voting thing, and we're still not included from conception. And the problem is that NYCHA is asking for 10% based on their data, based on our elections. And I venture to say that what needs to happen is that it should be no less, I think it should be 100%, but sometimes we have to compromise, and I would say 66%, but no further than that. You cannot have... Yesterday, we were in a meeting, and so one resident got up, she goes, "I only have like 150 units." That means that 15 people can make the decision for 150 families. That's what we're talking about when you look at the real numbers, right? And so it has to be more than that. And in terms of resident engagement, this is no reflection on the staff, right? This is a reflection on the chairman, who doesn't even live here. And I would venture to say that I don't understand how that happened, but the people who are running NYCHA, it's not working. I believe in resident management. I think that when residents run NYCHA, which it has in the past, NYCHA was better for it because we had a reserve of like in the billions of dollars. And where is our money? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Torres.
Thank you, council members, especially Councilwoman Alexa Villas for holding this very important hearing today. You all have a copy of our testimony as well as a copy of our recommendations as it relates to the New York City Housing Authority's draft voting regulations. My name is Marquise Jenkins, and I'm here representing the residents to preserve public housing, or RPPH. RPPH submits this written testimony to stand with public housing residents citywide who have constantly organized to make their voices heard and exercise decision-making power in their communities and within the Housing Authority. For years, NYCHA has maintained a formal resident engagement department, but despite its mission, has repeatedly proven itself to be inadequate in addressing residents' concerns and empowering residents towards collective decision-making. Most recently, this status quo of superficial resident engagement has been on display through the ongoing PAC conversion despite resident opposition, such as in Harlem River Houses, among others. The passage of the Public Housing Preservation Trust, despite widespread resident opposition citywide and even formal written opposition from the Housing Authority's officially-recognized resident representation body, the Citywide Council of Presidents, and the delayed and unclear communications surrounding potential public health crisis on display at the recent water supply concerns at Jacob Rees Houses. NYCHA's Resident Engagement Department claims that residents are at the "heart of NYCHA", end quote. But instead of residents being at the center of the Housing Authority's plan, residents are often the afterthought. Within NYCHA's consistent commitment to streamrolling through such dramatic institutional restructuring in the face of years of vocal disapproval, as well as obscuring potential health risks, it is clear that residents should have little confidence in the integrity or effectiveness of NYCHA's current model of resident engagement. I'm going to fast-forward just to the end of my presentation. Due to the consistent patterns of shortcomings in NYCHA's resident engagement model, it is clear that this process is in dire need of redesign with resident empowerment, leadership, and decision-making at its center, benefiting the residents' role as the heart of NYCHA. As such, until a robust, resident-led redesign of NYCHA's resident engagement is complete, it is unconscionable for the Housing Authority to continue with any ongoing or upcoming public housing conversion through RAD, PAC, or the trust. In addition to any resident engagement efforts, NYCHA must be accompanied by a renewal investment in public funds to facilitate this redesign, but also to address repair, maintenance, management concerns, which would allow residents to make real decisions in their communities without the cohorts and substandard living condition. As a first step towards creating meaningful resident engagement, RPPH calls for a $225 million budget allocation to facilitate a resident building developing and sustaining resident management cooperation through a combination of startup funds, vocational training, and establishing a new department of resident management to provide centralized support for RMCs at NYCHA's communities across the city. Thank you.
Oh, good, great. Good afternoon. Good afternoon to the Public Housing Committee of New York City Council and to Honorable Councilmember Alexis Villas. Thank you so much for holding this. I would like to start off my part of the testimony with NYCHA's mission, where it says to provide quality housing to New Yorkers that is inclusive, that is safe, and that it is sustainable while fostering opportunities for economic mobility. Now, this speaks to what Section 9 public housing is, which is not Section 8. And we continue to see this comparison as if Section 8 and Section 9 are apples to apples, to which they're not. Section 9 invests into the people that live in public housing, into the community. And that investment, that return on investment was to be seen in the rent. But NYCHA has been treating Section 9 public housing like Section 8 for the last 30 years, which is why it has not been fulfilling its promise. Not because it's deficient, but because the obstruction from the Public Housing Agency in New York City and their greed does not allow it to happen. When you look at Section 3 and the multiple billions of dollars of contracts that trigger Section 3, you do not see the result that's intended in regards to training, which there is none, in which I received from the General Counsel of NYCHA saying that there is no obligation for training, even though that's countering the Part 135 and Part 75 regulations regarding Section 3. When you look at also homeownership programs in which you have 100, not you, NYCHA has 130 boarded-up FHA homes, and they have over 5,000 households that are paying flat rent, and they are not offering those homeownership opportunities to these households? When you look at how NYCHA has been engaging their responsibility into Section 9 for the households, it has not been met, and this has been a huge, huge obstruction to the families who are predominantly Black and Hispanic, who are living in public housing throughout the five boroughs. Let's also pay attention that each, even though not every public housing development is in a red line community, but every red line community has a public housing development in it, as well as the fact that in 2021, UCLA has identified New York City as being the most segregated school system in the country. Most of those schools are adjacent from a public housing development. And so now, we fast-forward to today and the recent occurrences that's happening with the vote that they are now trying to propose in their convergence to private management under Project Based Section 8, or for NYCHA to continue its management under Section 8, or what they call the status quo, which is to maintain Section 9 public housing, which they have not allowed for the return in investment to actually flourish into our community. Resident management is also a part of those strategies that would allow for the redistribution of federal funds to come into our community and affect the people who it's supposed to affect, which is the public housing resident. We look at how NYCHA's resident engagement and outreach has disadvantage and is currently dismantling Section 9. We have to consider recent activities that's happened in citywide elections, of which I was a candidate of, in which I ran, and there was a 55-54 election count. Now, mind you, I proved to them that they engaged in election ballot stuffing. They did an online registration for online voters to vote, and when you have more votes than you have people who registered online, then that means that that was ballot stuffing. If you have 60 people who registered and 100 people who voted, that is what election ballot stuffing is. And then they also tried to hold a ballot that is supposed to be void. And I gave these protests, and I also evidenced precedence in election law for New York State. And what they did was, they sent it to HUD when I requested what's in the 964 independent arbitration. They sent it to HUD in order to park the protest so that they can push forward this trust voting policy without anyone being vocal enough to bring attention to what they're doing. And even though in the trust voting policy, they said they're going to get third-party arbitration, any types of protests still go, still is to go to NYCHA. And so if they're able to do this now with this kind of protest, doesn't matter how many third parties we have, they would still be able to put their hands on the scale and continue to abuse our communities. And this has to stop. And I thank you.
My testimony is going to be slightly different because mine will be a little more personal. Hopefully not too personal. Good afternoon. My name is Anne Valdez. I am a third-generation resident of Gravesend Houses, in which I also sit on the resident board. During the past 20 years, I've also been an active member of Community Voices Heard. First and foremost, I would like to thank the council for this opportunity to testify here. I have been a lifelong resident of NYCHA. I have a clear recollection of when the relationship between management and residents wasn't contentious, as it is now. Growing up, it was evident that this place I call home felt more like a community. The local patrolling officers knew the people in the neighborhood by their names, which created more of an overall camaraderie. I moved into my residence in 2005 as a victim of domestic violence and was handed keys to an incomplete apartment. Many things needed to be fixed. Thank you. Many things needed to be fixed, as my windows, the closet doors, and even the lock in my front door. NYCHA personnel stated they were coming to do the repairs. They fixed my front door cylinder and one window with the springs to prevent it from slamming. They still managed to neglect a lot of the improvements that needed to be done in my house, whereas there were supposed to be contractors working on the roofs to prevent leaking, and instead, it leaked so bad that it destroyed the apartment above me and started to do severe damage in my apartment. When I reported it and put in a ticket in July of 2011, they gave me a date that they were going to come to look at it and repair it in December of 2012. By that time, New York City had already been hit by two hurricanes, an earthquake, and a tornado. Nothing got done. The destruction became so bad, and NYCHA wasn't listening, and I also, at the time, was living under the Department of Social Services, so I had to run over to their programs, and I didn't have time to sit home because when NYCHA said they would come, they didn't come. All right? So as a result, it took, I'm living there now almost 18 years, it took them approximately 17 years, and with the help of my state assemblywoman, Dr. Matilda Frontis, and the media, to finally get someone to pay attention. And then there was a group that came that was supposed to be put together from the courts with all the complaints that NYCHA residents were making. They were called, I forgot the name of the group. Anyway, they finally came, and it took them two weeks to renovate my apartment, took NYCHA another three weeks to put in a radiator, to repair a radiator. So five weeks, I was out of my home, and by that time, I had so much mold that was in my apartment I was breathing, that I now have to live my life quite often during the year. Every month, I spend at least two weeks out of a month on a nebulizer, taking all types of medications. My son, who will be 24 tomorrow, has only spent, prior to the fixing, had only spent maybe a handful of times in his own bedroom because I feared for his health. If it hadn't been for my assemblywoman, I would still be living in those conditions. NYCHA did not listen. Instead, my assistant manager, who is now my manager, spoke to me like I created the problems, like I wasn't worthy of living there, and even threatened that with those conditions, I could be evicted, even though it wasn't my fault. And I plead with you, please, understand that these so-called improvements or switching it to Preservation Trust is not going to benefit the residents, not in the state that it's going. We need to make sure that the residents have more of a say than, as they say, the color of their walls. We need to be a part of the planning, and I would appreciate if we could keep it as Section 9, which really represents and looks out for the residents instead of the management. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We're also hearing from Denise Allen and Barbara McFadden via Zoom.
The first panel, I'm sorry. We wanted to ask a question. I'm so sorry. Councilmember Baer, go for it.
First of all, your testimony is the most powerful testimony we were here today, so I'm glad you did make it personal, because all of this is personal. People have to live like that. I grew up in the Lillian Walt houses on the Lower East Side for 30 years. My mama was there for 60 years. Jacob Rees was right across the street, and we used to have a little stuff here and there with them. But I know what it means to be neglected like that. So I just wanted to commend you for coming forth, and all of you, and to say, we have over 500,000 residents, over 500,000 residents. Please don't allow them to manipulate you against each other to take power away from you. So they're going to come with all these fancy things on how wonderful PAC, RAD, and trust is. Don't trust the trust! Because I'm telling you, when it comes to, in my district, where we have RAD and PAT and Linden Houses and Boulevard Houses, they have all kinds of problems. And these superficial fix-ups where they give you new, you know, awnings for your sink or whatever. But a year later, this is why it should have never been moved from Section 9 to Section 8. And if you are going to move it, move it to the residents.
That's right.
Move it to the residents.
Thank you.
And we should not allow them to tell us that residential management can't happen. We can get lawyers. We can get accountants. We can get people who know construction, developers. All that others are getting, we can get. And I've met with developers. They don't know nothing. They just have connections. Anybody could hire a construction worker. Anybody can hire a lawyer or accountant. That ain't no big thing. You don't got to go to Yale to do that. So I just wanted to come because I do have to get back to East New York, and we have several issues we got to deal with, but I wanted to be here with you today to say, don't give up the fight. Don't give into the trust. Don't give into PAC. Don't get into RAD. These are destructive forces, and politicians in Albany are going to come in and say, "Look what we got for you. The feds didn't do nothing. The states didn't do nothing. The city didn't do nothing. Look at we got." And then they're going to offer these things, and then after the first year, if you make it then, all hell's going to break loose. So I just wanted to encourage you to fight on. You know, we're going to be with you. You could not have a better chair of this committee than the chair that we have. I really appreciate this sister so much because it's not easy to be in here and say some of the things that we say. So I just wanted to say that, and stay around for a little while longer, and ask you, how close are we having a citywide? I know they have an organization already, but where is that at? The citywide residents, you know, leadership coming together, because that's where our power is. Is there anybody...
I think we could do it.
So I'm definitely going to tip it over to Mr. Manny Martinez, but I represent the residents to preserve public housing, and we are a citywide group. And in partnership with many other groups, we have been fighting the fight. And if it were not for our group, this legislation would have been passed in 2018. And we take credit for making sure it is not destructive as when it was written, when it was first written. And to Manny, who sits on the Citywide Council of Presidents, he was one of the people who drafted the letter on behalf of the officially-recognized body, the citywide council of presidents, to write a letter objecting to this legislation. So we are here, and we're still moving, and we'd love to have you come and speak on one of our Sunday meetings to talk to the residents, to uplift them and let them know that we do have strong support standing with Councilwoman Alexa Villas in the city council.
Well, you know, I'd be glad to come and I want to thank the council member for allowing me to say these few words. And say that when we get that, because when that legislation is passed, the bottom line is you. When I go into my neighborhoods, but they manipulate the residents so skillfully and put fear in them. You're going to lose your lease, you're going to be kicked out if you don't vote for this and that. So sometimes even the residents saying, hey, we want it. So my position is that I don't think you should accept any three of these, Trust, RAD, and PAT. If you do, then we need to get together to make sure you're not harmed by it. If we can't stop it, then we got to make it work for us. And I think that we cannot go for politicians that are just coming in and saying that this is the greatest thing that ever happened since sliced bread. But we have to make sure that the residents not have engagement and have power, as the chair said, has power. So my thing is say no to all of it, but if you do, I'll be there to fight with you to make it right for you.
Thank you.
I just want to underscore why it's important to have colleagues like Councilmember Barron, who has your back. Because I want to thank you all for sharing your stories and your experience. And thank you for your consistent advocacy and holding us accountable and making sure that we don't get fleeced with pretty stories, but that the reality is in the room. And so I just wanted to ask you very quickly, before we move to the next panel, and if we could try to answer as briefly as possible, and maybe we can do each of you, I know you are longstanding residents. How many, what grade would you give resident engagement for NYCHA? And what suggestion, one concrete suggestion, would you offer?
Okay, this is not a reflection on the staff, but I would definitely give it an F. Because you have certain staff members that do resident engagement, true. But it is the people who are on top, who are calling the shots. And what needs to happen is we need to be included from conception. Not at the end, not show us a PowerPoint, this is what we want to do, how we want to do it, right? The conception piece is something needs to get done. What are your ideas? Can we think tank, right? What is it that needs, what are the steps that need to happen to make this happen? But when it comes to resident engagement, it's not there. It's not, the word engagement is not there. It's like a hand-me-down, right? It's like, they show us a PowerPoint, then we're supposed to critique it, and it's somebody else's work. It's not ours. And I don't think that people understand that, right? There are some people in resident engagement that I would give an A to, right? But the reality of it is, as a whole, when it's being done, it's not, we're not part of the process from conception. And that is the issue that a lot of people actually don't understand, you know? And I've been, you know, I've been told by somebody who's not in resident management but who handles, supposed to be, that her biggest problem is that we're not sophisticated as residents to understand, and that's her biggest issue. Yeah. And so when you have that kind of mentality and it tucks down to the staff, then that becomes an issue. Thank you. And Councilwoman, I want to thank you for being an advocate for the residents in public housing and holding these hearings and respecting what we have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Martinez, what grade would you provide and what concrete solutions would you offer or approaches that could be changed?
So Public Housing has an exclusionary list that if you commit a crime, you will be excluded from the grounds, public housing grounds. Now, given that resident engagement recently conducted in election fraud, I think they should be excluded from the grounds of NYCHA, they get an F. And when any organization or entity or group engages in any kind of illegalities in order for them to get their way, that's an F. I think that what we need citywide from a help, it's not something that can happen within NYCHA because NYCHA's workplace culture and mindset has been so tainted for so long that it is almost impossible to change that from within. I think that what we need is a citywide initiative, a nonprofit initiative that's going to provide these resident councils with nonprofit funding, with nonprofit establishment, with nonprofit support so that they can become the independent resource and representation for these communities with the most power as possible in collaboration with the City Council. And I think that would be the most effective route to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Falling apart here. Well, I agree with what Manny has said with one thing he left out. Through the nonprofit collaboration, I believe that it should be a nonprofit that trains the council, the Resident Engagement Council, on what it is to be a leader and how to represent the residents you're supposed to be representing. Instead of them sitting around, like, well, instead of them sitting around waiting, waiting to be told from the top of NYCHA down what to say, what not to say, what to tell your resident leaders. No, I believe that it should be a nonprofit, and I have a couple of them in mind, that should be able to teach the residents, the resident engagement, how to truly engage the residents and have an open conversation, speak their minds, talk about what's needed, and not let it be told to them so that they have to carry it to the residents without any actual input.
Thank you. You'll have to indulge me just one small bit. By a show of hands, can, I know you again are longstanding leaders. How many of you have received workshops around resident engagement and tools? Let the record show.
Their idea, wait a minute, their idea of a workshop is that they send an email to my TA president and she tells me and the rest of our board that we have to get online for a Zoom meeting. And basically, they're telling us what needs to get done, how it gets done. That's their workshop.
As I said, you know that some of the staff would get an A. My experience has been that we've gotten that kind of training in terms of leadership and things like that. So NYCHA does have staff that has the capacity and the capability. But most of the ones who do that, guess what? They're residents in public housing. There's a sense of respect that a lot of times we don't get. And so when I say that, I'm saying, you know, once again, that the people who are on the top in NYCHA, who are running NYCHA basically, some of them have never lived in public housing, don't have a clue what it's like to live in public housing. So when you have staff that's from resident management who have been public housing residents who still are, there is a sense of ownership and there's a sense of respect that you get. So I have had positive, right, reflects, I'm not going to say, and that's why I said, like, some of the staff members, they absolutely get an A. But as a whole, the whole concept of resident management is what it is. It's not, right? Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Torres. It's important to note, right, that there are staff members, I think, that are doing excellent work and trying their best under constraining conditions. Nevertheless, the top line issue here is a culture of a lack of accountability and belief in resident engagement is what it seems. We'll talk more about and get some more specific information from NYCHA. So I think I'll leave it at there. There's a, oh, yes.
I just want to take the opportunity to piggyback on what was said. I think it would behoove us to remember that there are residents who actually serve on the NYCHA board. And yet, we never hear from them. And that's not because of their effectiveness, that is because of the way the structure is set up. They serve at the will of the housing authority and at the will of the mayor. And in terms of my recommendation for what needs to be done is we need to have a board of residents, who are the majority of the board, to really make sure that there's true decision-making and accountability coming from the residents.
Thank you. Thank you, very critical addition. So I think with that, I think we'd like to close and move to the next panel before we go to the administration. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear from Denise Allen and Barbara McFadden. Ms. Allen, you may begin when you're ready.
Okay. Hello, Hall. My name is Denise Allen. I have been living in, I am a tenant in NYCH Public Housing since 2019. I always believed that living in public housing would be a comfort living environment, an easy way to live, but that has not been the case. Since moving in my apartment, I have more complaining, living complex, living in my development and it has got to stop. Hold on. Let me. I am a wheelchair-bound. I am a wheelchair-bound person, woman lives that reside on the eighth floor in a development that has freely out of, frequently out of service elevator. I fear all of the times of missing my appointments, especially my medical appointments, going out, doing other stuff.
Thank you. We'll now hear from Barbara McFadden.
My phone, my eyes are tears.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, we hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear. Ms. McFadden, you may proceed. Yeah, you're muted. Can somebody please?
Hello, everyone? Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you, please proceed.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you clearly.
Okay, alright. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Barbara McFadden. I am the D-Cop Chair for the Brooklyn South and I'm the first Vice Chair for Citywide Council Presidents. I'm very thrilled to stand before you to inform you how I feel about the new Resident Engagement, Participation, and Civic Engagement Team. Even though I have been the resident leader for 14 consecutive years at Sheepshead Bay Nostran Housing, I had the equal opportunity to work with the old administration and the new Resident Engagement Civic Engagement Team. I am very pleased with the new team because they are hands-on now. They're very proactive, fear, able. In the next 50 or 60 years, I may not be here, I'm glad that I have the equal opportunity to work along with NYCHA to bring forth change so every resident can have a better quality of life. Just recently, I had a problem with New York City. I reported the issue to my citywide, Mr. Daniel Barber, and also to Resident Engagement Team because one thing to tolerate is inappropriate behavior because it goes against the conduct. And they did handle it, pleased with their immediate response. I want to give thanks to a few people that I worked with on a couple of projects. Her name is Ms. Suga, Delia Lee, Curtis Williams, Gregory Russ, Lisa Ford, Erica DeSouce, Brian Hoven, Arvin Turner, Courtney Yu, Andrew Kaplan, Mr. Daniel Barber. And last but not least, I want to give all praises to my wonderful resident leaders throughout the five boroughs because without them, it would not be a Barbara McFadden. One of my big concerns in New York City housing is public safety, mental health, and providing resources for our at-risk youth. By implementing healing circles, providing our youth with, attending healing groups once a week, giving our youth stipends and providing them with jar readiness trash. Programs are going now, Sheepshead, Nostran Housing. I'm working with the New York City New NYCHA Resident Engagement Civic Engagement Team and I plan to work with the 61st precinct because the captain there is Barbie St. for I-City Public City Committee. I want to see programs for the five boroughs. I meet once a week with the captain, the 61st precinct, also rest in case. I want to test this program to see if it's working. But my forte is minimized crime. I hope to see crime interrupt.
It's really hard to hear you because you're breaking up.
Oh, wow.
You may want to turn off your video.
Okay.
That might help, but you're on mute.
What part would you like to give? What part you would like to take?
I'm so sorry, Ms. McFadden, the video turning off didn't help. It's just your vocal is very choppy. So we may want to, we may want to try to revisit another connection. But we heard most of your presentation.
Okay, can I just say this last part? I hope to hear you guys hear it. I hope to see more crime interrupters on the ground at New York City housing, more police and private security 24 hours. As I said, one of my fortes is minimizing crime because no residents can feel safe in New York City housing authority if the crime rate is up. We need to have those crime interrupters on the ground. And I did bring this issue to our mayor, Mayor Eric Adams, and maybe at the next hearing, we can invite him. I yield.
Thank you, Ms. McFadden.
Can I comment real quick? I'll be quick, I promise. I do have to get back to East New York, but I want to say this and honesty compels me to say, I have not met a person in me to say, I have not met a person in the Housing Authority, Ms. McFadden, across the city that thinks Greg Russ is doing a good job. I haven't, haven't met one. That's number one. Number two, I really think that he should be fired or resigned because of incompetency with such a large access to resources. And lastly, I agree with you about the violence interrupters. We need to have more of them in our neighborhoods. And I think also, when we talking about crime, let's not forget to deal with poverty, unemployment, and mental health. You said invite a mayor, this is a mayor who cut the education budget by $300 million and has a bloated police budget of $11 billion. So I don't think that police is the solution to the crime, I think it's poverty. And I have to go, but I thank the chair for letting me indulge. Thank you very much.
Please. Thank you very much. We will now move to testimony from the administration.
We'd just like to recognize Councilmember Ose, who has joined us. Thank you.
I will now administer the oath to the administration. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this committee and to respond honestly to councilmember questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Thank you. Chair Villas, Chair Alexa Villas, members of the Committee on Public Housing, other distinguished guests, distinguished members of the City Council, NITRA residents, community advocates, and members of the public. Good afternoon. My name is Yuka Buskid, and I'm the Executive Vice President for Resident Services, Partnerships, and Initiatives. I am pleased to be joined today by Davida Raleigh Blackman, our Senior Director for Resident Participation and Civic Engagement, Brian Holden, our Senior Vice President for Intergovernmental Affairs, and Simon Kowitski, Vice President for Portfolio Planning. Thank you for this opportunity to discuss our robust efforts to engage and partner with NITRA residents as we build stronger communities together. We understand that partnership with our stakeholders is fundamental to improving the quality of life in NITRA communities. In particular, we know that resident engagement and outreach is key to our success. Our Resident Services, Partnerships, and Initiatives, RSPI Department, is solely dedicated to this work. Every day, its more than 250 passionate staff connect NITRA residents to critical and empowering programs and services while also engaging them on agency and community priorities. RSPI also support, supports the extensive network of resident associations and manages partnerships, programs, and initiatives involving economic opportunity as well as senior, youth, senior, and social services. Beyond RSPI, resident engagement and outreach is woven into the fabric of our work, whether it's communicating about repairs, the new capital preservation programs that will fully rehabilitate and upgrade residents' homes, or latest, or the latest sustainability measures we are implementing. To keep residents informed, last year alone, we published over 460 articles on our websites, drafted dozen of resident emails and letters, released 45 videos, translated over 2,700 documents, fulfilled our, fulfilled over 400 interpretation requests, and posted over 3,600 items on social media, and regularly distributed robocalls to nearly 320,000 phone numbers. This same year, our customer contact center, CCC, handled nearly 2 million calls. Every time there's a relevant service outage, we post flyers of development and disseminate robocalls to residents. Our monthly, our monthly rent inserts provide information by mail to 105,000 households and to over, over 58,000 households online. All of the vital information we disseminate is available in the covered languages of English, Spanish, simplified Chinese, traditional Chinese, and Russian, and we provide interpretation services as necessary. Oftentimes, we conduct direct outreach to residents on important topics through door-knocking. We meet and speak with resident leaders on a regular basis, and we offer opportunities for residents to get involved through platforms such as resident associations and the Resident Roundtable. To ensure that RSPI is successful in its work to empower residents and have their voices heard, we recently restructured the department in line with our overall efforts to transform NITRA's organization and operations. We also aligned RSPI with our new neighborhood model for operations, streamlining the communications involved in supporting residents. RSPI partnership-based service coordination model involves more than 150 community-based partners. Formerly known as community engagement and partnership, RSPI support residents, partnerships, and their authority through the following sub-departments. Our resident engagement, our resident participation and civic engagement focuses primarily on coordination and partnership with resident associations, but also outreach to all residents on policies and initiatives that impact their lives. Our resident outreach services focuses on engagement with residents surrounding NITRA's preservation, rehabilitation, and modernization programs to educate about the impact of these programs and specific developments. Our relocation services department helps provide families to temporary hospitality units or hotels to facilitate repairs in the apartments. It reaches out directly to impacted families and develop relocation plans considering residents' special needs, preferences, and any services needed. Our resident economic empowerment and sustainability department, REES, support residents involved in employment and advancement programs, business development, adult education and training, and financial literacy and asset building. Health Initiative manages partnerships and leads interagency efforts to conduct, connect residents to preventative health resources, create healthier indoor environments, and cultivate resident leadership in health. Our family partnerships department connects residents to critical youth and social services program, also including seniors from external providers and city agencies. The Office of Public-Privet Partnership builds collaboration with public, with private-public and philanthropic sectors to support NITRA goals of preserving public housing and improving residents' access to community-based services and opportunities. We cannot transform NITRA without input from our residents and other stakeholders. There are several, several organizations that facilitate partnership and resident engagement, and I will explain a few of them now. Resident associations composed of elected members are a critical, critical avenue for residents to support each other through events and connections to resources. They also enable residents to collaborate with NITRA staff at every level, ensuring that they are part of the decision-making process of development and across the authority. Over the past few years, we have made sure that resident associations have a place to meet, and we implemented a series of election reforms in partnership with resident associations to increase resident participation. That includes virtual voting, more vote, open voting, and regular civic engagement events. I'm pleased to report that over 250, I'm sorry, I'm pleased to report that 249 resident associations' elections have been held across the city since 2020. Currently, a total of 249 developments, NITRA developments, have resident associations. To build strong and productive relationships, property managers are expected to meet monthly with resident association leadership. In fact, our neighborhood model facilitates enhanced coordination between resident associations and property management staff. Residents also, associations also work closely with property managers to review and inform priorities within their local property-based budgets. Our work with resident associations also involves the distribution and management of tenant participation funds. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, provides tenant participation funds to support the work of resident associations in strengthening and supporting their communities. For instance, for educational classes and workshops, information dissemination and resource fairs, development cleanup days, and resident association office supplies. We implemented several reforms to improve the process for dispersing funds. For example, we updated the written agreement between NITRA and resident associations on the use of funds based on comments from resident leaders and advocates, revised the plain language guidebook that explains funding process, it's available on our website, streamlined the process for spending funds by introducing a commercial card that resident associations can use to approve purchases up to $5,000, created online tip sheets to help resident associations make the best use of the funds, and increased transparency by posting online quarterly budget reports that list the funds spent and still available by development. We know the transition to this new system of funding was a difficult adjustment for some associations. Of course, we are open to incorporating additional feedback from residents and other stakeholders on how to improve the tenant participation funds process. Every president of a recognized resident association is a member of our Citywide Council of Presidents, C-COP, which is organized into 10 districts. Resident Association presidents elect their board committee to represent their district and the C-COP Executive Board. The C-COP works with NITRA leadership to address quality of life issues at NITRA developments, advise on operations, and engage with government at all levels to advance the interests of NITRA residents. Members of the D-COP and C-COP Executive Board automatically become members of the Resident Advisory Board, RAB, which primarily provides recommendations for NITRA's annual and five-year agency plans. To further our partnerships, last year, NITRA and the C-COP signed a new memorandum of agreement that officially recognized C-COP as the authority-wide voice for residents and formalizes its role in advising on all areas of NITRA's portfolio. Specifically, the agreement establishes a framework for NITRA and C-COP, specifically, sorry, the agreement establishes a framework for NITRA and the C-COP to work together to enhance the authority's operations and management, amplify residents' participation, and better address the issues that are most important to residents. The agreement also outlines how NITRA and the C-COP will share information and communicate as we jointly reimagine NITRA, NITRA's future. I would like to acknowledge all of the C-COP members, including C-COP Chair Daniel Barber, for their efforts here. I would like to note that while C-COP has long worked with NITRA on issues affecting residents, this is the first time NITRA and C-COP have an official agreement since 1993. To further illustrate the program, the progress we're making, NITRA and C-COP used to meet twice a year. We are now meeting with C-COP every week. We have begun a new HUD-funded training program for resident leaders and employees under this new agreement, as well as the federal 964 regulations, which govern resident participation in all aspects of the authority's mission and operations. Our goal is to train residents and employees side by side so they can learn together and jointly understand the expectations for that partnership that are shared by NITRA and C-COP executive leadership. Last year, the Resident Roundtable, launched last year, the Resident Roundtable provides an opportunity for residents to help design the implementation of NITRA's transformation plan. It is more than, it's more than 30 members represent each of the authority's neighborhood portfolio, as well as Section 8 voucher holders in PAC developments. They provide valuable feedback and recommendations on matters such as lease enforcement, residence quality of life, safety and security, communication between residents and NITRA, and other areas identified by residents and staff. We work, we work intensively to keep residents informed and solicit their feedback on key initiatives that include PAC, the New York City Public Housing Preservation Trust, as well as other, as our Sandy Recovery and our capital projects more broadly. Based on the feedback we hear from residents, community members, and other stakeholders, we, we make ongoing improvements to ensure resident expertise and input are in the center of the PAC planning process. Resident leaders now participate in selecting developers, general contractors, property managers, and social service providers who will renovate and maintain their developments. They review proposals, interview development teams, and help us select the partner that are best suited to serve their community. The PAC resource team pairs residents with trusted third-party advisors and consultants to support these efforts. To engage and inform residents about PAC, we host meetings and info sessions that feature live interpretation, and we provide printed materials, video, and online resources that are available in multiple languages. Residents also have access to dedicated PAC hotline to ask questions and discuss concerns. Our engagement under trust, which was authorized this summer by the state, involves regular town halls where residents get to get their questions answered, answered. We have also provided a suite of materials explaining how the trust works, including how it will bring billions of dollars of comprehensive renovations to NITRA's developments while maintaining residents' rights and public workforce and keeping their properties 100% public. Residents will also be part of the process for selecting vendors to perform the rehabilitation work and can serve in committees, committees that check the quality of this work. Residents will be able to choose whether or not to include their development in the trust. We recently presented for public comment the draft trust opt-in voting procedures, which were developed in collaboration with resident leaders and policy advocates. These are just some of the examples of how we engage our residents on major policy, capital, or operational initiatives. We are grateful for your support as we engage NITRA residents and improve their quality of life. We are committed to comprehensive communication with residents, and we strive to incorporate resident voices, ideas, and perspectives in our work. We look forward to renew partnership with residents and other stakeholders, including members of the council, and we continue to make progress, as we continue to make progress together. Thank you, we are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, and we have many, many questions for you, so I thank you for your patience. Let's just start with kind of the big picture aspects here. What is the overall budget for resident engagement?
Our budget is approximately $15 million, $29 million for staff, and 20 for, 20-plus for OTPS expenditures.
So you said 50 million? I'm sorry, I had a little trouble hearing.
Approximately 50 million.
50 million?
30 for staffing and 24 OTPS expenditures.
30 for staffing and 29 for OTPS.
20, sorry.
Okay, that would be equal 50, thank you, had some math problems. How many staffers does NITRA Resident Engagement employ?
Currently, we have 200. Currently, we have two hundred and seventy-three staffer with about sixteen vacancies.
Sixteen vacancies?
Yes.
Are these all full-time positions?
Yes.
How many are NITIA residents?
We have forty-three NITIA residents employed in our department, our area.
So forty-three of the two seventy-eight.
Two seventy-three, yeah.
Two seventy-three. Do you know how long, what is the, how long the NITIA residents who are employed in resident engagement have been there, like their annual retention? Have they been part of the agency for a long time?
I don't have that particular detail broken down, council member, but we can get that to you. We do have that information separately.
What are the roles that they hold within resident engagement? Are they in senior level? What, what level are residents occupying?
I don't have the breakdown, but we can share that with you.
Bringing home in from NITIA to governmental. I don't have it all broken down, but the gentleman who leads resident engagement, Leroy Williams, grew up in NITIA, you know, lived in NITIA up until actually very recently, when his development converted to, well, it was a pre-RAD program, he had moved out. But there are many people in NITIA leadership who, in resident engagement, who are either current or former residents, including, you know, past heads of the entire department, you know, who also, you know, led the department, who are either past or current residents.
Great. I'd love to see what the breakdown is in terms of the organizational roles. Can you, can you describe to us how the department is organized to address the needs of the residents?
So, our SBI is organized to service residents in several capacity, and I mentioned some of the departments under the seven sub-departments, so we can relocate residents, connect residents to employment opportunities, provide social services to address hoarding conditions that we may find in a unit, relocate residents to address mold or lead abatement issues or asbestos, and we, we connect residents to health initiatives or preventative measures. One example for our health department, our health initiative department is to work on our smoke-free initiative where we educate and bring resources to residents who may desire to cease smoking.
So seven sub-departments. I heard one relocation.
Relocation. And then we have our Office of Public-Privates Partnership that may bring resources to our residents, whether it's tickets to a particular cultural event or apply for grants and bring additional partners to support the various initiatives and other priorities for NITIA. Our resident engagement department, of course, work with our network of resident associations and also bring support policies and enhancement in terms of connections to services. And our, our resident outreach services department engage residents around PAC-RAD conversions. And that their sole mission is to engage residents on every single aspect of that program in support of our, with support from our real estate development team. And I think, so family partnership, of course, they provide social services. And I think I mentioned everyone, Davida, did I miss one? Okay. So those seven sub-departments, whether it's providing employment opportunities or social services for residents and supporting their tenancy is our goal.
So in terms, so the resident engagement is a sub-department within the resident engagement overall. How many people actually work on resident engagement?
Approximately fifty-eight? Sorry. I'll pass this to Davida.
Hi, everyone. Davida Rowley Blackman, Senior Director for Resident Participation and Civic Engagement, and a former resident of Sethlow Houses. We, when we're fully staffed, will have about seventy on the team. Right now, we have approximately sixty. So we do have vacancies that we need to fill. That are probably the bulk of the overarching department.
Got it. So seventy, and the seventy really are in charge of the resident, the TA elections?
The resident associations, the elections, the family days, engaging residents on priorities of the authority, including the trusts, and any events that are happening throughout the authority.
And how do you distribute the seventy individuals over three hundred and thirty-five developments?
It really depends on the nature of the engagement. So depending on the engagement, we will prioritize staffing. Staff are dedicated to specific boroughs. In the case of the resident associations, they have a specific set of development RAs that they're charged with working with and assisting with TPA, family days, and any support that they need.
And do you think that is a sufficient level of staffing for the charge?
I think the overall department, so we're engaging residents on particular areas such as RA and events, but when you look at the overall department and the staffing of two hundred and seventy-three, I do think that we can make it work as far as engaging residents, of course. You know, more staff is always great in order to deepen our reach with residents and really address some of the challenges that we've heard today and that we've been hearing, of course, over a period of time.
But for the resident engagement, in particular with the seventy that are allocated, do you think that is sufficient amount to efficiently, you know, conduct the work that is being charged?
I think a higher number of staffer would help us to go even further.
What do you think the number should be?
I don't have a number in my head of what I think it could be, but happy to think about that question and provide a response.
I think it's clear that it's insufficient, given the early feedback, and certainly to recognize the work that is happening. I think, I'm sure many of your colleagues in resident engagement would be welcome having additional capacity and support, and I think it is okay to say that we need more capacity in the areas that directly touch residents. Brian, do you want to?
Thank you.
So I just want to point out that it really should be noted that there is no dedicated federal funding to resident engagement, right? So this is money that comes out of NITIA's operating funds. Years ago, there was something known under the Clinton administration as drug elimination money. That money was zeroed out in the early two thousands. So the work that Yuka and Davida's team do is tremendous for the amount of staff that they have. I see resident engagement staff out almost every single night. You know, they are out on weekends, they are out, you know, you know, way past, you know, holidays, you know, things like that. They really do not stop. And, you know, they are there to support resident associations, they are there to organize residents, and they're there to make sure that residents get the information that they have. But they are doing, you know, the best that they can do with, you know, you know, money that comes out of our operating budget.
In terms of, just, just to clarify, there were seventy-five staff positions in the old RE department when you adopted your twenty-twenty-one budget. Now there's two hundred and seventy-three in the newly restructured department. How many new roles are in the RE that have been added during the year? Or are these just staff being reshuffled around with few or no new positions?
Can you clarify that the number you referenced, council member?
The seventy-five staff positions were from the twenty-twenty-one budget. And then we saw the new, newly constructed department being two hundred and seventy-three, which is the staff line items that you noted. So I guess what we'd like to know is, oh, in the twenty-two, right, the fiscal twenty-two, the increase was to two seventy-three.
Instead of seventy-five?
Yes.
So I think that number might have referenced a specific resident, the former resident engagement department, yes.
The subdepartment, yes. Is, yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you so much. In fiscal twenty-two, the resident engagement department saw an increase in contract expenditures from thirty-five thousand dollars in the previous fiscal year to five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, an increase of four hundred and eighty-four thousand. Can you explain what accounts for this huge jump?
Are you speaking specifically about TPA dollars?
No, in terms of contract expenditures. We need to follow up?
Yes. Is that for the door knocking or?
That's a great question. I'm asking you.
So we, I'm sorry. So yeah, we did, during the pandemic for ERAP, we did have a contract to door knock to encourage residents to apply for ERAP, so I'm not sure if you're referencing that one, but it's.
So we spent four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to door knock for ERAP program that we were excluded from? Because NITIA residents were not part of the ERAP program?
Initially, we were applying for ERAP, but.
Well, everybody applied, but it was clearly that we were last, NITIA was last on the list if any money were to become available.
But we still wanted to be, to ensure that residents who are eligible can apply in case the state decides to fund those. And we also usually have a door knocking contract for our annual plan in terms of lead engagement to ensure residents who have a resident six and under, complete a survey to let us know whether they have a household member under six.
Is that contract someone you've been using? I guess who's holding the contract, and have you been using them for a long period of time?
If, and I just want to clarify, you know, we'll get back to you if that's the same contract. Our team negotiated and awarded the contract and worked with our lead team and our CEO's office.
Can you provide the contract to the council so that we can see?
Regarding the door knocking, sure.
Sure, we'd love to know who's door knocking, because I didn't see anybody door knocking, red hook. In terms of, does NITIA, as part of its resident engagement model, partner with local organizations to conduct resident outreach? I know in your testimony, you noted, I want to say two hundred, you noted a hundred and fifty community-based partners. That could be, that could be anything, right? Anyone who.
So, NITIA, we have formal partnerships and we also have informal partnerships. So our RE's department have eighty partners that they work with that support residents' employment opportunities and training opportunities or connection to employment programs. Our family partnership department works with all our CBOs undergrounds, meaning we have over a hundred and twenty-something community centers, over a hundred and seven senior centers and daycare centers. And we work with those organizations to support their outreach to ensure residents are aware of some of the programming they offer. So yes, we're continuously working with all of our CBO organization. We have close relationship with their sister, the agencies that are funding them, and want to ensure that it's providing the best services to our residents. And absolutely, on any given day, I may receive twenty to thirty phone calls from CBOs or emails requesting support, and we're readily available to provide that.
Great. In terms of, in terms, you reported in your, in your testimony, you know, all the published articles on the website, and I will say your website does have an enormous amount of information on it, relatively impenetrable. Have you looked at the analytics of your engagement and the efficiency of your engagement? We have, you know, all the requests, you have all the outnumbers, but is there any assessment around the analytics of who looks at those articles? How much engagement are you having from residents on all the website stuff?
I know our communications department do look at that. I don't know, Brian, if you have more information.
Yes, we do keep track of, and we don't, we can provide the numbers too. We do keep track of the number of people who follow us on social media, then the people open the emails that we send in terms of, and also the number of people who use the MyNITIA app, which is getting close to about a hundred thousand unique users. And so, all this digital communication, we do have track of that, and we can definitely give that to you.
Okay, we'll dig in a little bit later around that in particular, but NITIA seems to most frequently employ two tools for resident engagement, flyering and robocalls. Has NITIA ever measured the effectiveness of these tools? And what is the cost that it has dedicated to each of these pieces?
Though in terms of, we do flyer, and at one point, we conducted a survey where residents told us that they prefer to receive flyers in terms of communication. We do door knock and provide information to residents on specific initiatives, especially our PAC-RAD programs, and.
So who's responsible for the flyers? Are you talking about individual flyers to a resident, or are you talking about putting them up on the buildings?
We do a combination of both, so if.
And what time of day are these door knockings happening? Is it happening usually during the daytime? Because oftentimes, residents are at work, or do you just slip the flyer under the door?
So we do all of it. Sometimes we door knock, and we once, if we're doing a survey, for instance, we'll door knock and ensure that the resident is available to answer questions. Recently, for our application to a HUD grant, we had to survey over fifty percent of residents in particular developments that we're engaging. And those were door knocks, and we had to do weekends, if necessary, evening hours or day hours. So we understand we have a large workforce of residents who are employed and getting them from the hours of eight to four is not feasible, so we will return. Recently, even at RE's houses, where we had to do the check distribution, we did the same. We had office hours during the day and evening, and even at weekends to just get those checks to residents.
So, I mean, so have you maintained analytics on the door knocking and the effectiveness of it?
We don't have specific analytics on the door knocking, but we do capture our engagement activities across our seven departments on a monthly basis. But we're not capturing.
But for the door knocking itself, do you capture engagement activity?
For that particular contract, we do have numbers, the one that we referenced, but in general, we're not keeping those.
How much does NITIA spend on robocalling?
I, council member, I don't have that number right now.
Could you, could you provide us of what the annual budget for robocalls are?
We'll follow up.
Great, thank you. We'll pass it on to council member, Ose.
Thank you, Chair Avilas. Oftentimes, I mean, I've just been listening to the testimony. Whenever we have these advisory boards and we get, you know, our NITIA residents involved, sometimes they feel like they are speaking up about the issues that they are experiencing, but they're not heard in terms of the solutions that are provided. And I wanted to start off by asking how exactly are residents providing their input on the Resident Advisory Board and at NITIA roundtables?
Sure. So the NITIA Advisory Board comprised of resident associations who are representing the district. So we have the C-COP organization, there are ten districts across the city. In those districts, we elect, we elect officers to serve this. For example, Manhattan, North has a North and South District. So those ten, those ten districts, they have a combination of maybe six or seven members, some may have more, some may have less. But those bodies of resident association members comprise of the RAB, and so the RAB group, the Resident Advisory Board, meets to inform NITIA on their annual plan submissions to HUD.
And do you have specific examples in terms of how NITIA has used and implemented the resident's input and recommendation into their work?
So the annual plan, and again, we do have a public meeting annually where residents and community members, and even elected officials can provide comments. And every one of those comments or requests for additional funding or support, even regarding repairs, our team prepares responses and provides feedback directly to residents.
And how often do these roundtables and other resident meetings happen? Did you say every week now?
The C-COP meeting, the C-COP meets with NITIA on a weekly basis, every Thursday during the day at two at their request, and they'll provide agenda items. Since the RAB, the advisory board supports NITIA annual plan, there's a schedule of meetings, and we are in discussion with the C-COP and how we can make it more effective. Meaning, should we provide trainings? Do we do a combination of in-person and virtual meetings so they can get more information and provide feedback to our team?
And do you know if these roundtables are happening at the same frequency across all NITIA developments?
So the roundtable is a different body of residents who are volunteering to serve. on the roundtable and we have a representative from every single neighborhood. The, each roundtable member or committee of roundtable members may have a particular issue they are addressing or would like more information on. For example, they may want to address safety and security and they will meet with our safety and security team, conduct safety audit or speak to community members or residents in particular developments and come to NYCHA with their feedback and work with us to implement it. And the last cohort last year, I sat through a lot of their presentations, really great recommendations and we're working right now to address some of those.
And you said someone from every single neighborhood, not every single NYCHA development, correct?
Right, every neighborhood. Because it's thirty people.
Have you found that to be effective? I know that the problems that, you know, my residents in Albany houses are not the same that individuals that live in Sumner are having. Of course, there is some, some, some commonality between the two, but obviously there can be some issues that are very diverse per NYCHA establishment.
Right, so this is just one group. I think for engagement around particularly Sumner and other developments, the resident associations are the ones that will represent that development. The roundtable will look at a neighborhood, the roundtable member and all the developments in that particular neighborhood and try to audit what their needs may be around safety and security and, and then provide us some feedback. So I think there are distinct groups, right? We have the roundtable, we have resident associations, RAB advisory boards and CCOP.
And, and on to those resident association meetings, I've, I've been to plenty in my district and it is rare for me to see NYCHA staff at meetings. And if staff shows up, it's someone from the management who shows up. Has any staff that isn't part of the onsite management team, for example, higher ups from the agency come to RA meetings?
Yes, so the RA meetings are the RA meetings. So NYCHA can't just, you know, invite themselves, resident associations will invite who they would like to present. So for example, they may invite someone from the heating team right before winter or they may talk, invite the elevator department or our team or the chair or the COO. And I've seen that happening across the city. So it's up to the resident associations to invite NYCHA staff to address specific concerns in their development.
And usually NYCHA staff attends if they are asked?
Yes, absolutely.
I also want to say, every time I head over to RA meeting, residents, residents will tell me how they have not been heard by NYCHA, nor has anyone been transparent with them, especially with following up on complaints and tickets. Do you know why that may be the case?
So we have Marvin Walton, our deputy COO, testifying online, so I will ask him to respond to that question.
Do you want me to ask the question again?
I'm having, yes, please, because I'm having a few technical difficulties.
Yeah, so basically every time I, I head to an RA meeting, residents will tell me how they have not been heard by NYCHA, nor has anyone been transparent with them about their open tickets or tickets that they've closed out without any repairs being made. There's a lack of, of follow-up, especially, you know, after these meetings, during those meetings, the next RA meetings. And I'm wondering why that is the case and what we can do to, to fix that.
Okay, great. Thank you for that question and we really appreciate the opportunity to address you. I'm Marvin Walton, I'm the deputy chief operating officer for NYCHA. We take this matter very seriously and each and every time we get such complaints, we do proper follow-up and we investigate to make sure that the work that was to be done is done. If it's not, we do have a team that goes back out and, and follow up with the resident. So we do take it very seriously, each complaint that we receive like this.
And, and can you elaborate on what that follow-up looks like? Is that door knocking? Is that robocalls? Is that, I don't know, personal flyering to individuals that have these complaints? What does that look like?
Absolutely, with our new work order reform process that we have, each of the residents are left with a slip that has a number for their neighborhood planner and are their secretary. So we have resources that are available to work directly with the resident. They do not have to call our customer care center, contact center, they contact their, their neighborhood planner and secretary to have any of those matters addressed in reference to their work orders.
Wait, so their neighborhood, they're supposed to contact their neighborhood secretary to, for the follow-up? Or the neighborhood secretary calls them?
Council member, thanks so much. So the complaints that you hear are valid because they're true. And for far too long, the burden on getting complaints satisfied has been on the resident to follow up. Work orders were closed without work being properly done or work being completed. As part of the transformation plan that we put together under the 2019 HUD agreement, we have come and will be happy to come to your district to talk about this. It is a program that is not finalized yet, but is in a work in progress and is called work order reform. Under this plan, we have put together smaller districts within neighborhoods that each have a neighborhood administrator and a neighborhood planner. In the past, when you would call for a complaint, say you had a hole in the wall, right? And you'd say, Mrs. Jones calls the customer contact center, says a hole in the wall, I need that it could be completed. Somebody from NYCHA would come, they would look and they'd say, yep, you have a hole in the wall.
Or they won't come.
Or they wouldn't come, correct, yes, or they wouldn't come. Under the new system, it wa, it is the burden and the onus is not on the resident to get every step of the way that repair completed. Somebody will come, say you have a hole in the wall, you need a plumber to fix the broken pipe that caused the hole in the wall. You need a plasterer to come after that to make sure that the hole is sealed once the plumber, you know, fixes the issue. And then finally, you need a painter to paint the room to make sure that it looks decent. All of that needs to be worked out with the planner, planner at a time that works for the resident, just the way I would want it in my home if I was having repairs done in my home. I wouldn't, I wouldn't tell a contractor to come whenever you feel like it or when a time that works for them, it is a time that works for the, for the resident.
And I'm so sorry Chair, when is this plan, first and foremost, when is this plan expected to be finalized?
It is still a work in progress and as I said, we will come to your district to explain it, we will come to you personally to explain it and we come to your tenant leaders to explain it. Tonight, I'm going to be in your district at Albany houses. You asked if senior staff go to developments. I go, I'm at developments at least three times a week. Each of the residents behind me, I've been to their developments. And council member Aviles's district tonight, we'll be in Red Hook West as well. NYCHA staff are often, you know, at resident association meetings. I've been to every single development in your district's tenant association.
Brian, can you, can you tell me with specificity of the three hundred and thirty-five developments, what percentage is fully operational under this new model?
So we started in Queens and Staten Island and it is not fully operational. I would not present it to be that way. It is still a pilot in place and I think this is something that we heard residents say, it should, the burden should not be on us to make sure that our repairs are, are complete. The burden, number one, it should be a partnership. We hear from day one, we explain to you what the issue is and we come up with a schedule in order to get the repair completed.
So the, so just, I want to make sure that I'm hearing you correctly. So for the record, this new model, neighborhood model, has not been implemented fully anywhere.
So we do have neighborhood planners in every single neighborhood throughout the city and, and it is in its infancy in other places. It is not, it is in all five boroughs. We did start in Queens and in Staten Island, but I would not say, I would not say it is right now fully operational, it is in its infancy.
Okay, so what developments is it, is it?
Each neighborhood, like Red Hook has, you know, a planner and I'll make sure that you have that person's name.
No, 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 I, I want to know specifically what developments? You said Staten Island and?
Staten Island, Queens where we first started.
Right, what developments is it operational in, in Staten Island and in Queens?
Every, everyone has.
Everyone in Queens and Staten Island.
That's correct.
Is under this plan.
That's right.
Okay. It might be in Red Hook, but I'll tell you, my office feels this consistent very issue every single day.
So if you don't mind, Brian, let me speak to that to give the full clarity. Work order reform is a part of the transformation plan for the neighborhood model. The neighborhood model has rolled out completely across all, we call them four boroughs because we combined Queens and Staten Island, they're together as one. So the entire neighborhood model and the work order reform has rolled out. Queens and Staten Island was initiated, was the initial in twenty twenty, in, in late twenty twenty-one, early twenty twenty-two and throughout this year, each quarter, a new borough was introduced to the neighborhood, to the work order reform process. Manhattan went last, so we are full, fully operational in all the boroughs. And it's a work in progress because we're continuing to improve. Throughout this process, the residents are more involved. I stated earlier that residents now have a direct resource to use and as Brian stated, that is correct. In the past, a lot of the burden has been on the resident, but now we have dedicated resources that can work directly with them. So over time, this, this will continue to improve where we will, you will see repairs being done expeditiously and the work will be sequenced out. And oftentimes what happens to the work orders when residents, in, in our formal process, they will put in tickets and then the tickets would, would close. But behind the scenes, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just, I think we just need to take a moment of pause. I think there is a clear distinction between it is conceptually covering places and it is practically addressing resident concerns. We continue to have a five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand back order of repairs that have yet to be addressed. So I think we have to choose our words carefully when we tell residents that it isn't in every borough, when their experience is exactly the fundamental opposite, it feels very much like gaslighting. So I think, I think, you know, I, I really hear NYCHA is trying to address this issue and I think there is promise in this model. But telling us that it is operational in all five boroughs when your colleague just said it is in pilot phases in two boroughs and not fully implemented is a very confusing situation. So I think we need to get our story straight. We understand that you've adopted a model and it takes time to operationalize it and we know there are shortages with, you know, specific trades that are in, in particular need like plumbers. But I, I think we have to, you know, be realistic in how we are painting this picture. I think the desire is to get there, but we are not there. So I, I'd like to move because obviously we could have a hearing all day about repairs. And it is the most persistent issue that residents face and on a daily basis. But I'm going to pull us back to the resident engagement piece and this is clearly all interlinked, right? How we engage, it spans every issue that is confronting NYCHA and its residents. But I want to just skip back to resident management corporations. Can you define resident managed corporation for us?
Sure, so a resident management corporation could take on many different forms. It could be residents decide that they want to manage an entire property. They, it could be that a residence want to manage a certain aspect of a property, so say like janitorial, you know, duties. It could be that the residents want to manage a community center. So it, it is not just one size, it is, it is dependent on what the residents themselves would like to do in the plan that they put together.
Fantastic. What resources has NYCHA committed to establishing resident managed corporations?
So under the current HUD rules right now, it says that residents may, you know, deal with the housing authority in order to form a resident management corporation. To date, there is one tenant association in New York City that we are currently engaged with in order to form a resident management corporation. They have a limited corporation in mind, they would like to manage the janitorial services in their development. We are working very closely with them, including, you know, giving them outside independent help as well in order, in order to make sure that they're successful.
That's so interesting because in one of the resident roundtables, forty-eight percent of the respondents had indicated that they would be willing to even help and maintain their own buildings. So it's interesting that there is, there's one TA that is pursuing that in earnest. So in terms of, so are there dedicated resources within the NYCHA buzzed within, within resident engagement that is specifically allocated to resident managed corporations?
So council member, our, our REES team is actually working on a training and develop a white paper around resident management corporation and in the process of meeting with internally to, to determining a work plan to implement those. We, we understand there is one, one development that wants, that are a little further ahead, but we did have some interests from some developments in Brooklyn and others and we're working on a training, on developing trainings for these RMCs. And there is some funding requests to support the training to develop RMCs. Again, we'll start small and we definitely have one that's further along than others, but there are a few others that, that reached out that they're interested in establishing.
Is this, is this specific funding allocated for this purpose?
At this point, yes, we, we have, there's been a commitment from our chair to, to fund this and to.
And what's the scale and scope of this commitment?
I don't have that dollar, but I, I'll share that with you.
Okay, I'd, I'd love to understand very specifically what is the amount and the, and the scope of the, the commitment. Clearly, one of the elements of this is increasing resident, increasing capacity for individuals in terms of, excuse me. Let me, let me just, I just got confused there with my questions, but right now, as I understand it, REES is in the process of developing a training. Is that the full scope of the work dedicated to resident management corporations at this point?
At this point, we, we developed a paper and we're now trying to identify the type, we identified some of the trainings that are recommended, we want to fund it and create a rollout plan. So that's why we are in the process.
Have you received inquiries from residents about resident managed corporations?
Yes.
And so in terms of right now, in terms of the one resident managed corporation that is looking specifically at janitorial services, what, what's the level of engagement that is happening there? I think you started to explain that, Brian, but if you could color that a little bit more with, for me.
Sure, and you could also add too, but the TA president there and the, the residents in her development who have been supporting this idea meet regularly with, at the time it was Daniel Sherod, who is our COO at the highest level and including Yuka's team. So there are regular meetings. The, the, the conversations have been around like what would this look? It has never been done in New York City. In fact, nationwide, I believe there's only one resident managing corporation in existence right now. And so it is, it is, you know, the, the conversations on would be, you know, who's responsible for what? Was the funding come with, you know, look like? You know, how do you actually put this thing together? And so it is in its infancy, but it is at the highest levels of operations, those conversations.
And one, one of the requirement per HUD is that fifty-one percent of the eligible residents to vote must support the RMC. So it's fifty, so actually it's fifty percent of the residents plus one must support the RMC in, in order for.
That, that is, thank you for that. Because. And yet, the trust is proposing ten percent. I, 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 there is a full disconnect with the expectations here. Yeah. I, I almost have to leave it there. We'll get back to that. In terms of, you mentioned, I know there was the memorandum of understanding that was newly created for the CCOP and actually, a good number of revisions to the bylaws relatively recent and an election. You noted NICA meets with CCOP regularly. What does, what does that look like?
So CCOP provides agenda items to NICA. And they, so whatever topic they want to discuss, they need that information or backup or a deck of at least seven days in advance to review. And once we have the meeting, our team will present, and they provide feedback. So this, again, CCOP sets the agenda. We may have items that we would like to bring to CCOP. For example, if we're initiating, initiating a new program such as work order reform, and we want to present and let them know, this is where we are. This is how you can connect to your neighborhood planner. I know Brian talked about this recently. And so they set the agenda. They definitely want us to only cover one topic per meeting to give enough time for feedback and support. And so that's how we schedule those meetings.
Does CCOP have jurisdiction over particular matters within NICA?
Again, our goal is to have CCOP at the table. And so anything we're organizing or planning, where, or they're supporting or providing feedback. So they are, CCOP is the jurisdictional wide body that NICA recognized is, as a voice of residents association.
But fully just recommendations? There's no legal binding decision-making that occurs with this body?
So we're governed by nine sixty-four regulations. So depending on the topic, we, we may cite that regulation in trying to support whatever CCOP wants us to implement.
I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, nine sixty-four stipulates when you should listen to residents?
No. It is, it is the, the regulations that dictate how NICA works with resident associations.
Right. My understanding is nine sixty-four says residents should be fully engaged.
Right. To have, to have a seat at the table, to provide feedback and to make recommendations. And, and again, I think, as Brian stated, we, we are working closely with CCOP for, to, to plan engagement around every aspect of the housing authority, including budget trainings to ensure that if they, in terms of their local development, if there are priorities around budget, they, they have a say in that. So yes.
Right. But, but NICA is under no obligation to actually listen to anything.
No, we, we must.
Or implement. I mean, there is no, they have no legally binding decision-making authority. They are purely advisory.
They're advisory.
Okay. I, I just, I'm just trying to be clear. And in fact, with all the, with all the resident engagement bodies, the roundtable, CCOP, the, the TAs, and probably many other iterations of residents that have come together, including potentially even the board, which is not a majority residence, I think. How many, how many residents sit on the NICA board?
Three.
Three residents of how many?
Three residents on the NICA board. That's great.
So in, in no area is there any legal binding authority for NICA to actually listen to residents?
So the residents are part of the NICA board? They vote on all?
Sure, but they're not a majority.
No, they're not.
And they're appointed by whom?
The mayor.
Okay. It's not a democratically elected body of residents that are appointed by their fellow residents? It is, it is a, an appointed body. So.
Council members, it's, it's no different than any of the other board members. And their vote is the same as any other board member. So the residents' vote is the same as, the chair's vote is the same as anyone else on that board, and they were all appointed by the mayor.
Sure. That is, that is a standard model. You're absolutely right to point out that is, that is not distinct from any other bodies. It holds the same problems of an appointed body that doesn't reflect a democratically elected body of, of people who are supposed to be represented. So I know that's not, I know that's not specific to NICA. This is a problem of governing we have across the board, where other people represent other people instead of allowing them to represent themselves. I think the point to underscore here is that we have an enormous amount of resident engagement and leaders at NICA that can cite nine sixty-four very clearly and expertly. And yet, we have no binding authority anywhere, which is just a fundamental problem that I'm trying to underscore and point out here. Can you explain why certain resident councils, why certain developments don't have resident councils, and what are the challenges that have been identified there?
So council member, our goal is to establish a resident council in every single development. And we reach out to residents who will flyer during the summer months. Even this last summer, we went to every development that doesn't have a council, posted flyers, actually door knocking and deliver under every door, encouraging residents to formulate a resident association. Some did and some did not. Some may identify one or two residents that are interested. And we work really hard with them to identify or recruit other residents that can fully form a board. We must have a minimum of five to do that, so having two is not enough. We definitely have to have at least five officers on the resident association board to fully recognize them. And we, again, we continue to work, and sometimes we'll get a lead. Now, you know, even from one of our council members, this particular resident wants to formulate a resident association board. We'll reach out to them and work with that one individual to build up a team.
Is that work that, that NICA staff conducts solely, or do you do that in partnership with outside entities?
We do that solely. Yes.
Okay. Can, let, just to switch to TPA funds. How much money did NICA receive? Or actually, how much money did the NICA TPA funds allocate to resident councils in fiscal years twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two?
So council member, in twenty twenty-two, we allocated two point two million. I'm sorry, David. No, two point two, two point two million.
Million.
Two point two million. I'll, I'll correct that, make sure I give you the right number. Okay. In two, in two twenty-two, we received three point nine million dollars for resident association funds and, and TPA funds, and two twenty-one, three point eight million. And that's prorated based on the subsidy.
Apologies. Can you repeat that one more time?
So in two twenty-two, we, we were allocated three point nine million dollars for resident association or TPA funds.
Okay.
And in two twenty, twenty-one, three point eight.
Three point eight?
Yes.
Okay. And then twenty twenty?
That, that number I don't have.
Okay. I'd love to get it, when you make it available. Did NICA receive the full appropriation for each of those years?
In twen, actually, in twenty twenty-two, we received one point four, one hundred and four percent. And in twenty twenty-one, ninety-six point seven four percent.
Twenty twenty, I'm sorry.
Twenty twenty-one.
Can you speak closer to the microphone?
Sorry.
It's very hard.
Twenty twenty-one, ninety-six point seventy-four percent.
Did you get that?
Ninety-six point seven four percent.
Ninety-six point seven four percent in twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
In fiscal year twenty twenty-two?
It was actually over a hundred percent.
Over a hundred percent. Okay, one oh four percent. And we'll, we'll get the information about twenty twenty.
Yes.
What are the stipulations for TPA funds?
Stipulation to spend? Yes. I'll pass that to David.
Sure. So the eligible activities for TPA include consultation and outreach efforts, any activities that inform residents about issues, record, about their households or their living environment, annual membership events, resident council training, resident council elections and organizing, reasonable refreshment in light snack costs, stipends, self-sufficiency and capacity building activities, social support needs, resident management training, and training related to the development of resident-owned businesses and technical assistance.
And, and how does, how often does NICA assess spending? Like the eligible spending?
There are annual spending plans that each resident association has to submit for review before the allocation can even go to their resident association account. And then as they spend, there are also proposals that come with every single request that they have to spend those funds. And those are assessed for eligibility. And in the, in some cases where they go over a certain dollar amount, they are also subject to procurement rules.
And who does that assessment?
So we have a TPA unit. We also have our finance team. And again, in the event where it goes over the certain dollar amount, we have the procurement team.
How much of the money that was allocated remained unspent at the end of each fiscal year?
Right now, we have over twelve million dollars that's unspent.
Twelve million for fiscal year twenty-two?
So that is total. We could provide the breakdown by fiscal year if that's needed, for sure.
And so twelve million total, this rolls over year after year?
It does roll over from year to year.
Okay. And do you have an assessment of where the twelve million is coming from by development?
We can provide a breakdown by development. We do have that information.
That's great. As, as part of this funding, does NICA allocate any dollar amount to capacity building for resident associations?
So resident associations can opt to use their funds for that. They're the ones that are coming up with the spending plan and deciding what to spend their dollars on. And so long as it's eligible, we are granting those requests. We certainly have plans to work with resident associations to think more creatively about how to use those funds, and then to provide them with the support to do so.
Does NICA provide a, a record to residents about TPA funds and their use?
At present, other than the quarterly report that is posted online, the specific breakdown by development to each resident is not provided. We do encourage the treasurers on those boards to provide that information during the resident association meetings. But that is not audited in terms of if that is actually happening.
It's definitely not happening. When a resident council is not authorized by NICA, what does NICA do with the TPA funds for that development?
So those, those funds still remain in the account because they belong to the specific development and not to the, the particular folks that are in the office at that time. So when the office is reestablished, or the association, rather, is reestablished, or in the event of a turnover from one association to another, those funds are still allocated to that development.
And does it just stay in an account in perpetuity for those developments that don't have associations or have never had? What happens to those resources?
It does stay allocated to those accounts. And as I stated, we do have plans to have discussions with the CCOP and the district members as well to think about ways to encourage those developments to establish boards. Many of the boards that are vacant right now are our FHA homes, which are spread out throughout the city. So they are not a congruent set of developments in the way that others are. So we are thinking about ways to even get those individuals involved so that the spending can begin.
Got it. And if, in order to change that allocation or to use those resources, what would be required?
I think it would involve a conversation at the CCOP level of ways to reallocate the funds specifically for FHA homes. It's something we're looking at. In other cases, we do anticipate that those developments will establish boards and we'll be able to utilize their funds.
So CCOP has the authority to decide what to do with TPA funds that are unspent?
I would not say the authority per se, but definitely, they are a partner to us in thinking about solutions across the city when it comes to any and all things that have to do with resident associations.
But who has the authority? If CCOP said, we want to, I don't know, do it for a basketball tournament?
And I think that's something we would.
Y'all didn't agree. Who has the authority to make the decision around unspent allocated TPA?
Once we have this conver, this conversation around what CCOP wants to propose, we will be getting approval from HUD to make those adjustments.
So HUD has the authority to shift?
HUD is the provider of those funds, so we would seek that advisement from HUD.
Thank you. That's, that's all I was trying to get at. In terms of, does, do resident associations have separate agreements and spending stipulations? Does each resident association have a different set of agreements and stipulations?
Yes. Each resident association has a spending plan and a spending agreement that goes online each year.
It's online?
Meaning that it gets activated each year. So each year, we put a spending agreement in place with the resident association.
If a resident wanted to find what the spending plan for their development was and doesn't have a good relationship with their TA president, where could they find that information?
My office can provide that. We will make sure that the contact information for resident participation and civic engagement is available to everyone in this room.
Great. Thank you. What type of trainings does NICA provide to the resident councils?
So we have a cluster meeting schedule that rolls out each year that is currently in negotiation with CCOP. And it covers budgeting, leadership, how to engage residents in the resident association and topics as such. We also will be encouraging resident associations to enroll in HUD's Lead the Way training, which covers how to manage finances, among other topics. And we're working with a HUD technical assistance provider, CBR, to also roll out a training for resident associations.
So do you keep track of who has attended your trainings? And have you assessed how effective those trainings are, at least what the feedback of the residents are that engage?
We do keep track. We did conduct surveys at the end of last year's training. And as I stated, we are in conversation with CCOP about their feedback. They've provided us with some great feedback on things that they would like to see for the coming year. And our goal is to honor the requests that they've provided to us.
What kind of feedback have they provided?
In some cases, the trainings are helpful, particularly when new boards are being established. In the cases where boards have already been in place for numerous years, there is more customized training that is needed. And that is what we'll be working to understand, how we can best support different resident associations based on their needs and not necessarily have a cookie cutter approach to the training.
Great. In terms of a CCOP, I, I can't remember this, so forgive me. There was a development of a code of conduct that was eventually going to be developed. Did that ever get developed?
So council member, yes, we did develop a, a code of conduct that's in the revised bylaws. And we're now working with CCOP on how to enforce that code of conduct. So we.
So the enforcement mechanism is in discussion?
Yes.
And when do you expect to complete that?
We want, we want to prioritize it, but we will have to definitely plan this out with CCOP input.
Great. We, we look forward to.
Yes.
That, that's been a long-term project.
Yes.
In terms of, as part of the resident engagement infrastructure, we have a few different opportunities for residents to, to engage as we've discussed. Forum, excuse me. I'm going to actually put that aside. I've realized we're running late on time here. So what we've heard, and I know you have heard, residents often complain that management office is rude and dismissive. We also hear that occasionally, management office staff may also give out the wrong policy information and outdated information. And there are many, many claims of discriminatory and retaliatory behavior on staff. What kind of training are you providing to your employees? What kind of training are you providing to your employees and customer service?
So I'll, I'll start this response and then I'll pass it on to Marvin Walton. So one of the things that we're piloting, and I mentioned in my testimony, is training that I'm a HUD provider. HUD is funding a, a training for resident associations and property management staff, and NICA staff as a whole, to engage in, to sit side by side and participate. And we did do a pilot, and it was, it was enlightening, enlightening for property management to really acknowledge that this was a valuable tool, and they saw the importance of collaborating with residents. So I think in the future, as we roll out this, this new training where resident associations and property managers are in the same room, hearing the same thing and, and, and planning how to work together, it, it will improve the customer service that they are providing to residents. And I, I'd like to pass it on to, to Marvin. I know him and our CO are also planning some trainings. Marvin?
Mute. Oh, thank you. Thank you for unmuting. Very good question and another topic that we take extremely serious. Yes, the COO's office is working on this issue. We, we get, we get complaints, and each complaint that we get, we do investigate, and we make sure the appropriate disciplinary measures are taken. We value our residents and we encourage our employees to provide the quality customer service to them. But there is a plan that's going to be developed, that's going to be addressing and, and retraining our frontline staff to provide better customer service to our residents.
So what does appropriate disciplinary measure look like?
Because of the, of these collective bargaining agreements, and most time with the civil service status, everyone is entitled to a fair process. And oftentimes, it involves suspensions, and it could lead up to termination as well as, and possible demotions as well.
How much of your property management team has, has been disciplined?
Do not have that information, but we can definitely provide that to you, council member.
I'd also love to know how many complaints you've received, and if we see any geographic concentrations or particular concentrations per development. Could you provide that for us?
I'm, I'm not sure if we have that information, but we can check. And if we do, we'd be happy to share.
Great. We look forward to receiving it.
Okay.
How is, how is, excuse me? How does NICA ensure that its, its property management team has the most updated information? Again, to this point of receiving misinformation. How does NICA staff communicate with its colleagues?
We have, the structure we have with, in each of our neighborhoods, there's a neighborhood administrator. And the administrator is on the ground, working daily with each of the property managers. And we make sure information is passed across the board. There's a series of trainings that we take, we, we have our employees to attend, oftentimes updating our policies on an ongoing basis. And we make sure that staff is properly updated on that information.
So does that mean, so neighborhood administrators, what are, what are the goals and metrics that they are measured by?
Neighborhood administrators, one more time, sorry. Can you repeat, please?
Oh, sure, sure. I was gonna, what's the, what's the metrics that neighborhood administrators are held to? Is there an expectation of monthly trainings? Is there, you know, metrics around customer service and receiving feedback? I'm just trying to better understand what that actually looks like on the ground? Or is it to the discretion of the administrator, which could be all kinds of things?
A great question, council member. Currently, there is no documented matrix for the neighborhood administrators when it comes to training of their frontline staff. We do require that they have a presence at the development because of the neighborhood model we have. They have a smaller geographical area, so they are on the ground on a daily basis, visiting properties every week. And they are able to observe the frontline staff working specifically in the management office and, and observing and making sure that they're providing the quality customer service that we, that our residents deserve.
How many NICA, how many complaints about staff has NICA received in fiscal years '20, '21, and '22?
Council member, I'm not sure if NICA tracks that information, so I cannot speak to that at this point.
Okay. I think that, that's a pertinent piece of feedback that I think the agency should really take seriously. It drives at the heart of, you know, this comment around misinformation, disrespect, and disregard that is very commonly discussed when you talk to residents across developments in New York City. Without tracking that, there is no way to address it properly. So I, I would suggest the agency look very closely at tracking that and reporting it.
We would, we would definitely take that into consideration. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. In terms of, okay, there's always so many questions. So many questions. Give me one quick second here. So here's a, here's another example that happens quite a lot. And I, for the record, I know Brian Honig is one of the most hardworking NICA individuals that takes our calls all day long. But in terms of, in a development, there's a gas outage. What is NICA's protocol to communicate with residents and resident leadership? So how does NICA ensure that residents and impacted apartments are given notice? What is the required notice of service interruption?
So first of all, whenever they, great question. And whenever there is a gas outage at a development, we make sure we communicate primarily with the tenant association president if there's an active tenant association at the development. We also provide periodic, we try to do it biweekly at each of the developments to provide statuses of the gas outages. The gas outage process, it entails replacing, in most cases as a capital project, replacing the entire gas lines at a development. And it's a long process that could take up to nine months in most cases, and sometimes a little longer because of the external partners that, that are involved. But throughout, throughout the process, there are periodic updates with all of the residents in the buildings that are impacted.
And so are these, what is the NICA protocol for updating these notices in accordance with Local Law 47? I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, sorry.
Should I repeat? I can repeat the question. What is NICA's protocol for updating these notices in accordance with Local Law 47? Especially with an anticipated date of a service restoration?
I'm sorry, but I do not have a precise answer for that question at this time, but we can definitely get back to you with that information.
Okay. We, we look forward to receiving it. Thank you.
Yes.
So just switching very quickly to, how many people do we have on testimony? Oh, okay. I think, I think we need to wrap it up. We don't want to keep you here all night long. In terms of the Public Housing Preservation Trust, just to shift very quickly. Oh, okay. Here we go. In terms of, obviously, we are in open comment period around the trust for the voting process. The law requires two choices on the ballot, but the proposed voting rules say that there are going to be three choices on the ballot. Join the trust, join PACT, or remain in Section 9, which is keep, keeping the status quo. Having the three choices creates a possibility that one of them might win with just 34% of the vote. Do you believe that a major change to the lives of developments residents should go forward if only approved by such a minority of votes?
So just like any, thank you, thank you, council member. Just like in any election, like, you know, election for city council, election for the governor, election for the president, it is, you know, the, it is a winner-take-all system. So it is a, you know, the, the side that's able to garner the most votes, they will, they will rule the day.
So your answer is yes?
That's correct.
Have you considered establishing a minimum percentage of votes, such as 40 or 50%?
So this was, so we, the way we put this rule together was a committee made up of 10 resident leaders. Each borough was represented in community-based organizations like Community Voices Heard, Legal Aid, Community Service Society, and a limited number of NICA staff. This question, a threshold is required by the law, and this question was probably the most debated question in our meetings. And we've met, we've been meeting for two months now. There were many folks who thought the number should be very low, even lower than the 10% that's currently proposed. And there were folks who thought, you know, a higher 30 or 40% number was more reasonable. The issue is here, we don't, we have, this is the first of its kind in the nation. We do not have a lot of data to support what would be the appropriate number. What we did look at is tenant association elections, and we know there that the average turnout for tenant association elections is about 7.7%. In addition, we looked at municipal elections as well, including city council, mayor. And we looked at presidential elections and elections for governor. The highest elections that we saw were, of course, in presidential elections. That's true, of course, the board, whether it's for public housing residents or any other residents. But even in those cases, the development with the highest number of turnout was still below 50%. So I think what is most important here is engagement and making sure that people understand what is happening, why they're going to vote, and do everything impossible to make sure that we get the highest turnout possible. What we're doing in these elections is ensuring that tenants have many opportunities to vote. They will have 21 days in order to cast their ballot. They can do that in person, on, by mail, and online. That type of, you know, voting system does not, that is all the good government suggested voting systems in place right now. It does not exist, you know, in other types of elections. And, you know, it is in our best interest to make sure that we have the highest turnout as possible.
Can I ask why resident-managed corporations were not an option on the three options?
There's nothing in the law that would prevent it being from, as an option, and it could be. In the proposed rules, there is a period of time where the resident association and NICA will meet to discuss the election, the options on the ballot, and also, you know, some things that the tenant association may tell us about a development, you know, that would be really important for us to know to run a successful election. There is no reason why resident-management corporations could not be on the ballot, and that is something, if that is something that residents say they wanted to see on the ballot, the law does not prevent that.
Right. But if it's not on it, it's not an option. Can you explain to me the difference and rationality around how we can follow a 50 plus one for resident-managed corporation election and then do a 10% threshold? And then compare that with such a low bar of our own democracy, which we are really fighting hard to change. How do, how do we, how do we rationalize that we are fine to follow 50, 50% plus one for resident-managed corporations, but 10% for this entity?
Sure. And let me just say too, the proposal that's out there is just that. It's a proposal. It can change. And I encourage everyone in this room, elected officials, residents, and community-based organizations, to let us know that that number is too low. Let us know that the number should go up. And that is something that, you know, we need to hear before the final rule comes out. I cannot comment on the federal, you know, the federal rule. And, you know, the state legislature, you know, made the, the law on the trust that only required a minimum threshold. I think what is important here is, again, to make sure that proper outreach is done, to make sure that people are given a reason to vote, and to make sure that we maximize participation. And, you know, that is our goal.
What, what do you mean specifically by proper outreach?
Sure. So at a minimum, the law requires that residents need to be contacted in four different ways. They need to be contacted by email. They need to be contacted by snail mail. They need to be contacted with notices, you know, in the development, and they need to be contacted by phone. So that is a minimum threshold. The proposed voting rules also require a minimum as well. And the minimum is at least four meetings have to be held, one on each topic. And so, so if it is the three choices on the ballot is, are rad, the trust, and what it means to, you know, remain in Section 9, all of those things need to be, you know, covered in one specific meeting. And then a general meeting too on the voting process as well, or whatever else residents, you know, need to, to discuss.
I'm sorry, Brian. Four meetings? All of New York City or per development?
No, per, per development. So, yeah, exactly. No, not all of the, I'm sorry. This is always on a per-development basis. Correct. So, and, and that is a minimum. So we can, you know, and if you compare that, you know, to other programs, especially federal, you know, federal programs, it is, you know, way greater engagement than is required under those programs.
So in terms of, I know you've had a good number of sessions, and there will be one tonight in my development. Have you kept track of how many residents have actually attended these sessions to date? And you, can you provide a breakdown of attendance for every session?
We can, and we will sure to get you that. I've been to, so, so far, we've done eight sessions just on the voting, voting procedure and proposal. I have attended six of them so far. I was just in one last night in Rutgers Houses. I think the attendance has been, I will just give you anecdotally, you know, somewhere between, you know, 75 and 100 residents in each of them. The residents that come are very, have been, you know, come in, you know, knowledgeable. They come in with, with strong opinions, both on the trust itself and the voting procedure itself. And, you know, we are using their comments also in order to engage, engage the final product. So we are taking comments by, you know, in writing and taking comments orally as well. And in addition to that too, we've gone to about 20 tenant association meetings we're invited, including yours tonight, but I, and I'm going to split up tonight. I have Albany Houses too on the same topic as well, and we'll continue to do that throughout this process.
Oh, okay. We'd like to recognize council member Sanchez is on Zoom. Thank you for joining us, council member. The proposed rules say that you will translate materials into commonly encountered languages identified pursuant to the Language Assistance Services standard procedure. And some of those translated materials will only be made available upon request. Your Language Assistance Procedure Manual only lists three covered non-English languages, Chinese, Russian, and Spanish. Will you commit to translating the ballots and all of the education and outreach materials into at least the 10 designated citywide languages?
So if you, you know, so if you, um, I will, I will give you an example of, you know, if you were at the meeting last night, and, and many, and some of the residents here were at the meeting last night at Rutgers Houses, we definitely did, uh, translate in, um, Spanish, uh, to Chinese dialects, uh, Russian, uh, as well. And this is where those meetings, um, in advance of an election are really important, um, because we will, um, you know, have, um, conversations and also base it on, on services that we have, um, to make sure that we are covering the languages that are important to that development. For instance, um, my colleague Simon, um, did a, a series of meetings in Williamsburg recently, and the residents there told him, if you don't have Yiddish, you will not be able to conduct, you know, strong and productive meetings. In other places, people will tell you, you need French Creole. In Long Island City, people will tell you that you need, um, you have to make sure that, you know, Bangladesh is, you know, Bengali, excuse me, is, uh, is, is used here. So, um, yes, uh, we will, um, you know, especially, you know, where it is identified to us that this is a need.
Will you commit to just making translated ballots and outreach materials available to residents without having them request it? That is a barrier, right? Most people actually don't know they can request it, and now they have to then go through the extra effort of doing so.
We definitely will have on the covered languages, um, it is, um, let me get, let me get back to you on, like, a council member, I just don't want to commit to something that I have to, but it is something that we want to make sure, we definitely want to make sure that everybody who wants to participate in this, no matter what language they speak, is able to do it, um, you know, without any burden.
Does, does NICA, in your estimation, actually have the capacity to provide interpretation?
We do, um, and we have, uh, from our Department of Communications staff, we have, we have a contract with, um, different interpretation services, um, and we are able to regularly provide that, you know, at, you know, at meetings, um, and in other places where available.
Yeah, language accessibility, I've seen firsthand, certainly a red hook is a serious issue despite repeated attempts at, uh, accessing interpretation, they have received none, I've witnessed an election process, uh, a, uh, a, a process of explaining what the, um, all the presentations were done in English, there was not, no interpreter, uh, no translated materials, there was no one live interpreting, it was a Zoom call with hundreds of residents, there was no space for engagement, uh, which I have been on the record, uh, with NICA about. What improvements have there been made particularly around elections to address language access?
So council member, I'll take that one, um, currently, we're in the process of administering twenty-three elections across the city, and at every one of those meeting, meetings, we're having in-person interpreters in the, the languages that Brian referenced, Spanish, simplified Chinese, Chinese, and Russian. If the particular development demographics calls for another one, we will have that available. And so we usually have three meetings for elections, a, a general meeting, a nomination meetings, and then the elections itself, and those are usually for four hours, we will have, there's a commitment to have interpreters at every single one of those, and that's what we've been doing, um, since we started, or we reorganized the department.
Since you started, when?
Um, the, this, this cycle of, um, meetings, the first meeting took place in October, actually, this week, uh, we're doing, we're conducting nomination meetings, and a month from now, we will be hosting the elections.
Great, I'd, I'd love to participate in those.
We can share the list of the twenty-three developments that are currently in the election cycle.
Great, um, yeah, I think, uh, I, yes, um, oh, yes, good question. Um, this week, the administration's November twenty-two, uh, plan instituted a peg of thirty-six million over the next four years for city tax levy contributions to NICA for OTPS. Uh, will these cuts, beginning with a seven point three million reduction for NICA this fiscal year, impact resident engagement programs?
At this, I haven't heard that that would impact our program, no.
You haven't heard anything yet? What, do you know what the cuts will impact? Or you haven't talked about that quite yet?
We can get back to you.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much. Does, does our colleague have, does Billie not have any questions? Okay, okay, I think I, I think with that, um, can we just quickly talk about resident, um, elections? Is there, is there a developed protocol around how resident elections are, um, held that is distributed and available to residents?
So we do have, um, I, I think since the last time the team spoke to you or, um, testified, we did develop some Q and As that are posted online in, in governing resident elections, um, Davida Raleigh Blackman is new in her role, but we are in the process of developing, um, written protocols in, in conducting elections.
So there is no, yet, the protocol around elections?
It's not a formal protocol, but we will have one, um, we're working, our commitment is to develop one.
How many, how many elections have been contested?
I don't have that information available right now, council member, but we can share that with you.
Okay, and I'd love to know, what is the protocol to address that contestation?
Sure, so once we conduct an election, the resident, any resident may have seventy-two hours to submit a written, um, contestation of the election process, they can send that via email to the resident engagement mailbox, or mail it directly, as long as it's postmarked a particular date, and we recently revised our nomination form to reflect that. So with, if we, any protests received, we provide background information to our law department for review and advisement on whether to, we, um, to conduct another election or accept the results as is.
And how many complaints have you received about elections, uh, election administration in NICA?
Uh, I don't have that number handy, but we can, we can get to you.
And when you, when you respond, I guess, I guess, walk me through what the response would look like, who is involved in making those decisions, and are the decisions articulated in responses to residents?
Yes, so resident may cite particular issues that they have with the particular, with that election, I did not have the ballot, it was not translated, or folks were electioneering in the polling site itself, or the resident association, the current board stayed in the election, um, room or the polling room, and so whatever they articulate, we will respond, um, one, to each complaint, and provide those responses to the law department for review, to ensure that we're not violating any, any residents' rights, and they will provide a ruling. Again, residents could appeal that decision, uh, again, by submitting a rebuttal.
Have, has an election ever been invalidated?
Yes, we've had elections invalidated, I don't have that particular number, but yes, we, we have had to redo elections based on some findings.
And, and how recent was that?
I, I remember, I don't have the particular date, but I do know a development, um, in, in Brooklyn recently where the votes were off by one, and we had to, um, redo that election.
What's the threshold for invalidation?
If, if, if there were any, uh, any misconduct, or if the, if we found that the, the protest was valid, we will have to redo that election. But again, it's determined based on our review by the NICA's law department.
The reason why I ask is because I've, I've personally witnessed a conflation of all these things, lack of translation, electioneering, um, confusion, ballots that were not actually translated, misinformation being provided by the people on site around whether or not someone was eligible to vote, all in one fell swoop, with no, with complaints that were lodged, and no actual outcome, it just sailed through with no problem, everything apparently was perfectly fine. So I'm just curious around how, what's the, the level of discretion that is being provided around how one evaluates whether or not there's shenanigans going on, and the residents deserve, um, to get a different process.
I'm sorry to hear about your experience in that particular election, council member, I can only speak going forward, we're ensuring that all protests are received, we respond to each individual complaint, send our responses to our NICA law department for a final review, and they will provide a ruling as to whether we need to, we conduct the elections all over again or not.
Great.
But I do know, as I've stated earlier, that we're ensuring at least we have interpreters, we have adequate staff on site, and, um, the Q and As are available for residents to have.
Are staff that's deployed to, um, to the, to the sessions around elections actually trained around how to facilitate a conversation about what is, what is, what is being proposed to the residents in terms of these different positions, and, and, and what is the responsibility of the roles that they are asking, are they proposing?
Yes, so every election, we, the, the staff are trained, and we actually, um, have a civic engagement group, and staff will take turn leading those elections so that we're clear, and, and there's a script that's developed so that across the city, we are speaking with one voice around elections and connect, conducting elections, and the team will explain all the various roles that residents are running for prior to the nomination process, or at the general meetings.
So, um, I, I have not witnessed such an occurrence. Uh, what I have seen is staff come in and put on a PowerPoint presentation and a Zoom call, and never once stop when they see half their audience who has no idea what is happening on that Zoom call, because they don't speak that language, ever ask if they understood what was being proposed. They never stopped and asked if there were questions around what is happening, uh, and what the information that is being proposed. When I asked staff about that, what I was told was, we were just told to put on the Zoom, which is fine, and maybe that was what they were just told to do. There was no engagement with the residents around what in fact was the purpose and, and the importance of what was being done. The people on the Zoom had no opportunity to ask calls, to ask questions, forgive me. Uh, so I'm not sure where all this engagement is happening, I have not witnessed it. And I look forward to improving, and in fact, I spoke to the chair, I spoke to Chair Russ about it, and my concerns, um, and particularly around if NICA didn't have the capacity to do that, that they could partner with organizations, in fact, that understood community engagement and what it was to, what, what it's like to have a dialogue in a respectful manner with people. And that could be something, maybe election administration is not something NICA should be doing. So, so, uh, the chair's response was, oh, yeah, maybe we should be partnering with, with local organizations around facilitation. So I guess my, the long, short of the story is, the residents didn't, the staff did not have the appropriate training to even facilitate a dialogue, they didn't even introduce themselves, they didn't have people engage at all with the materials, a truly lost opportunity of frustration, because much of the people just walked out and had no idea what was discussed at that meeting.
So, uh, council member, you know, Davida and I were committed to reforming that entire process, I, I, I have to concur with you, I witnessed, new in my role, I witnessed what you, some of what you were stating, and we, and we're already on the process of reforming that. Yes, you need to introduce yourself, communicate the intentions of the elections, and be available to, or see where folks may have confusion and, and, and address that. But we are working to retrain the team and to ensure that we're speaking with one voice when it comes to elections across the city.
Thank you. Um, I think, I think with that, um, we can, we can turn it over to public comment. Uh, thank you, uh, for your patience, uh, for your answers, we look forward to, obviously, the, all the responses of the questions you were not able to answer today. You know, this was not, I just have to underscore, this was not meant to be, uh, certainly a session on, on bashing, uh, NICA staff. We recognize that there are many staff who are doing great jobs, there are also many staff who are not. And, you know, I think, I, it, I, I understand the challenges that we're all facing, but I do want to thank those staff who show up above and, and do the work above and beyond for the residents under very difficult conditions, uh, you know, what do they say, uh, teacher, uh, classrooms or teachers' learning environments, workplace environments, uh, home environments, and this is very much the case here. But we do see a culture that is truly problematic, um, and I think what we've heard from the residents over and over again is, we have a long way to go, and communication is critical, honest communication, not the, we're going to do this over here in ten years, but to just be honest and acknowledging the missteps and where we currently are with clarity. And so, you know, we look, we look forward to continuously, I'd like to see residents in decision-making roles, not in advisory roles where NICA gets to pick and choose when they want to use residents, uh, because that is certainly what seems to be occurring in many cases. So I, I thank you for your work, um, and I think with that, we're gonna, we're gonna move to public testimony.
Thank you so much, council member, and can I, uh, speaking of honesty, can I correct something that I said, uh, earlier, just for the record? So on work order reform, you know, I had said that, um, the work order reform rolled out in Queens and Staten Island, um, at first in twenty-twenty-one, it did start as a pilot there, we did learn a lot there, and now each of the boroughs has a planner and are using, you know, the tools of work order reform in now all five boroughs. I also said, it's in its infancy, it, you know, and it is very early in the program, so it's too soon to judge it, but I think, you know, they are using the tools from Staten Island and Queens in all five boroughs, um, in order to make sure that customer service is improved. This is something that I would like to make sure that we brief this committee on, um, and, and the members too, uh, to make sure that we get your, you know, your feedback on this, make sure that it is, you know, rolled out correctly. It is something that staff has, uh, also met with the C-COP now on several times too, to get their feedback on, um, to make sure that the program is, you know, now, it most importantly works for the residents well.
We, we, we look forward to, um, to receiving further inform, information, thank you for the correction, I, I think it is still very much hard to hear that it is in all five boroughs, residents will tell you it is not. So I think more to come on that specifically.
Thank you very much. We will now move to testimony from members of the public, we thank you for your patience. We will take testimony from individuals who are joining via Zoom and those who filled out a witness slip to testify in person. Because there are a number of registrants, unfortunately, we do have to set a timer to two minutes per registrant, so, um, please, please do try to keep your testimony within that time. First, we will hear from Donette Chavis and Karen Blondell, who are joining via Zoom, please listen for your name to be called and accept the prompt to unmute, unfortunately, you are not able to unmute yourself, so please accept the prompt when you receive it. We will also hear from Beverly McFarland, Tamika Map, Teri Emmanuel Campuzano, and Raquel Tilia Yeva, who are here in person. Ms. Chavis, whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, can you?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry that two minutes is only be allotted on such a huge conversation, but my name is Danette Chavis and I'm the TA President of LaGuardia. And I have the following questions and concerns, which I believe should be brought to the table in regards to the manner in which resident engagement conveys information to tenant and tenant leaders and how NYCHA holds them accountable for doing so. At the top, first of all, there was zero communication given regarding the imminent passage of the Preservation Trust. Tenant leaders and housing advocates had to call an emergency rally at City Hall the day before its passage, while the mayor, fully informed and in support of its passage, held his own rally and press conference to champion its passage. The question is, what is the level of transparency when moving forward in an action that has not been sufficiently conveyed to tenant and tenant leaders who are denied the option of making an informed decision because of it? The HUD regulations that require NYCHA to meet and inform the tenants of actions being taken regarding their housing have been violated. They neither gave sufficient notice on the intent to move forward, nor met with any of the tenant leaders. And because of the swiftness in which they moved forward, whatever good intent existed has been sabotaged by their own failure to be transparent in the intentions to move forward. In addition, the content of the legislation passed remains uncompleted with issues that need to be worked out and addressed regarding voting. So how can this be considered favorable in the eyes of any resident who now must be walk-through decisions made concerning them when they ought to have been present as those decisions were being made? In regards to resident engagement, those within resident engagement have been given the responsibility of training and advising resident association leaders.
Thank you for your testimony. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Ms. Blondell? Karen, if you could please accept the prompt to unmute and we will take your testimony.
Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you all. Thank you, Councilmember Avellis. The one thing I do say is that we never stay on agenda. I thought the agenda was about resident engagement, but it was started off by a panel that talked about the Preservation Trust. And just for the record, you can tell Mr. Barron, I am another person who likes Greg Russ. I don't, I don't, I don't discriminate against a person based off of their, from New York, white, black, because that gets public housing residents nowhere when everybody's classing us anyway. So let me get to my point. To Ms. Yuca, when you guys did the revamp of the TPA funds, that was prior to the elections that took place in the last year and a half, where we have over 100 new resident leaders, including myself, and I still find that it has been difficult to manage smart data and to use the commercial card, and that, and I think that we should revisit that again. I also think that some of the people at resident engagement think that the residents are electing them instead of the people who they are electing. And that is very undemocratic to be vindicate, uh, treated vindictively and retaliatorally just because you are selected as the leader and maybe they were comfortable with the people who were already in. As far as C-COP and District Council, I don't see the synchronicity between the local resident associations and how that ties into D-COP. We are doing much better in Brooklyn South, thanks to the fact that we have a new district leader, Ms. Barbara McFadden, but that is not standard across the board. I think that resident engagement in New York City is too big to be done in the manner that it is being done and we should start on the local level.
Thank you. Time has expired.
District level, excuse me, I waited four hours to speak, so give me another minute, please. Again, we have to change the way resident engagement is working because this is not a rural or an urban area. This is a very dense city area and it is too much to have all of this under one council because we're not meeting, we're not seeing them, we're not getting the postings, and it's not going fairly. So I will stop my comment right here, but I have a lot more to say and we shouldn't have these meetings once every five years. If we're going to change this, we need this on the calendar at least quarterly. Thank you for your time. Have a good Thanksgiving.
Ms. Blondell, don't go. I want, I want to ask you some follow-up questions. I think you brought up some, some really critical points I'd like you to expand on for the record.
Thank you.
Can you tell us some more about the revamps around your experience with the TPA funds and what you would like to see specifically?
Yeah. So, you know, we came in new this year or last year, when it should have took two weeks to turn over everything to us, we got nothing turned over. We had to start from scratch. We had to start from lead abatement in the unit where the tenants were meeting for years and from there buying equipment and stuff like that. I remember the first January, they gave us the current budget, but we had another reserve budget that we couldn't access until June. And then with that being said, they were asking you to put in the whole year's annual budget, but then when you try to put it based off of the current and the reserve, it, it got very nasty to the point where I had to ask for my resident engagement personnel to be removed from Red Hook. Because I had to keep telling her, these residents did not elect you, they elected me. And with that being said, she should be working with me and not the other way around. I felt like they were very top-heavy with how they wanted you to deal with the Police Department, the PSA, the manager, and elected officials. And I'm sorry I had to say that, Alexa, but it's all true.
Yeah, yeah.
I am here for the residents. That's who I'm here for. Police Department has its own meetings, elected officials have their meetings, and yes, there is synchronicity, but my mission is to elevate the voices of the residents in Red Hook West.
Yes, and, and you have been doing an incredible job.
Thank you.
In terms of, in terms of, what was the recourse? When you, when you started to experience the friction with resident engagement, what steps did you have to take in order?
Well, I will say that there has been a big transformational push and change at New York City Housing Authority. Two years ago, I would have came on here and tried to rip their jugular out. I would have said that all of them up until C-COP need to be gone. But I have seen significant changes that are being implemented. No, they have not turned the ship around, but it is starting to turn. And so with that being said, I'm trying to work not only from the outside as a resident leader, but from the inside to understand the mechanisms and how NYCHA works so that we can have a future here in New York City. Because right now, we have three choices on the table. We have RAD PAC, we have the Preservation Trust, and we have status quo. Those are the choices. Now, as far as the voting, I have also worked on that working group, Councilmember. And yes, there were different voices, some saying 10% was too high, some saying it was too low, but we are presenting it to the communities and taking back their comments and we're going to keep on and I'm going to hold everybody's feet to the fire. Residents, New York City Housing Authority, elected officials, other resident leaders, because it's going to take all of us, all hands on deck is what's needed to turn New York City Housing Authority around.
I hear you. One last question. You, you mentioned resident engagement was top-heavy. Can you, can you talk to us a little bit more about what that means explicitly in your experience?
So I'll, I'll speak from my experience. I am a Black American and one of the things we fought for in this country is the right to vote. And so when I looked at the way voting was going here in New York City Housing Authority, I reached out and I spoke to elected and to our regional administrator to ask her, how come people have to pay for a membership in order to vote? And how come, because all of that reminds me of the times when blacks had to go and actually recite the ABCs in order to be able to vote. So I feel that democracy is not in effect in regards to resident engagement. I feel that yes, we are starting to loosen this billpin up a bit. We have 100 new leaders across the city, but we need a chance to synchronize amongst ourselves on a local level and these districts, the way resident engagement has it cut up, we should be connected to White Corv and Gowanus, who are geographically close to Red Hook. No, they got us connected to Coney Island, and I don't care because I was born in Coney Island, but what is the, what's the sense behind this madness? Sometimes it feels like they don't want us to engage each other, but we need to engage each other. And I think a lot of people are scared because they look at New York City Housing Authority residents that if we get it right, we could become a political power.
Without question, without question. NYCHA residents could shut it down.
Yes.
Thank, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
For your experience and your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now hear from Beverly McFarland, Tamika Map, Teri Emanuel Campuzano, and Raquel Tilia Yeva.
Danette, okay. Good afternoon and thank you, Councilwoman, that you gave us this opportunity. Today, when we speak about resident engagement, there was no, there haven't been adequate engagement. They have had very little engagement letting my residents, I'm from TAF Houses, I'm the president of Senator Robert A. TAF Houses in East Harlem, and last night was my monthly meeting and I had 70 members at my monthly meeting last night and not one of them heard about the, the trust, not one of them knew about RAD and PAC, and no one really did not know that we was in Section 9. So there has been no resident engagement in terms of educating our residents on what is coming and the negative impact that it will, that it will, for our community. One thing that I, I'm not understanding why this legislation was passed because NYCHA is, has an active federal lawsuit, consent decree right now in place from lead and mold, and they have not expedited that. They have not fulfilled that obligation. So why did the state and city step in and do a leg, pass this legislation that they, that, that would affect, that would affect our, our homes? And not only that, why do they have to use Section 18, which is abolishing the, and deposition of our homes? So they can exercise that if they come into these apartments and into our homes and see, they deem, they have to deem it inhabitable in order to get these vouchers, these TPA vouchers. So once they, they are deeming our home inhabitable, they can exercise the right to abolish the building if they, if they choose to, because that's in the language of, that's in the language of the legislation. So we want, I want to be very, put it on record that why are they using Section 18, which for these TPV vouchers, tenant perfection vouchers, to tell, for HUD to give them this, these vouchers to make sure that, I'm sorry, because I'm getting, I'm very passionate about what's going on and I want to save my home. And, and when I'm reading the language with these TPV vouchers, it's the same thing that happened in Cabrini-Green in Chicago can happen to us in New York. So we have to be very careful and I just don't understand why this legislation was passed because they have an active dissent decree under the federal government. That's why we have a federal monitor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And I just, I don't need to remind you or any one of this, this is a state authority where the city government has very little jurisdiction over. And so, and while it feels like jurisdictional confusion because it's, it's almost majorly funded by the federal government and under federal regulation, I would implore you that it is a state authority and we need to get our state legislators fully on board to follow the residents and their needs.
And we really, but the state legislators, the state legislation legislators should understand what's going on in terms and the negative impact that this Section 8 TPV voucher, because it's not traditional Section 8, it's TPV that stays in the home and it stays in the apartment. So it's not some traditional Section 8 that you can take with you. It will be only designed to, for that apartment. So our legislations, legislators need to know the negative impact because NYCHA has only given them the, oh, they're going to get a new kitchen and bathroom. They can have that. I have a new kitchen and bathroom. I worked on my life.
Thank you. Tamika Map?
Hi, I'm Tamika Map, the State Committee Woman for the 68th Assembly District. So I'm here to read some comments from Princess, which is a NYCHA tenant resident. She said, "We, the residents, are glad to see NYCHA will be required to engage a third-party vote administrator for all elections. Our residents 18 of age and older with permanent written permission from NYCHA to reside in an apartment can vote, but the voting process must be meaningful according requirement. The draft regulations only require 10% of households at the development to cast a vote for the results to consider valid. This is much low for the key decision and is irrelevant that the turnout for the tenant leadership elections is below 8%. NYCHA explains that the low threshold is appropriate because turnout is typically low is irrelevant, or demands that the quorum need to be raised 66% of all eligible voters. The draft regulations are missing critical support for resident decision-making. Prior to notice, residents must be proud access with an independent tenant advisor to guide outreach strategy and system evaluation. NYCHA must also provide an independent physical needs assessment of their campuses as part of the required outreach material. NYCHA's own assessment is not enough. These materials must also describe potential impacts on staffing of each option presented. The mandated outreach materials must also disclose how much financing backed with the property the trust would give for NYCHA and be used for the Preservation Trust option. NYCHA needs to be more transparent and make truthful statements during the proposed rules and the trust PowerPoint meetings that will govern how residents will vote on the future of their developments. There's been widespread manipulative messages and convey of disinformation strategies by NYCHA staff members at the trust meetings repeatedly to influence the residents on whether or not we should be part of the trust RAD PAC or remain Section 9 public housing. NYCHA wasn't all forthcoming about protections under 964 regulations, including statements that the trust is still considered public housing, succession rights protection, trust relocation process. And one I'm just going to address, the very important part, is resident social leaders and district-wide councils should be able to use TPA funds to educate the residents on a four-week trust voting process and legislation that was recently passed. The 964 regulations services opportunities under the TPA eligibility activities, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony and I feel like I should have explicitly asked that question. TPA funds can't be used for outreach around the voter procedures? Yes, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Teri?
Hi, my name is Teri and I'm the TA President of Melter Tower, a senior building. And it's kind of like NYCHA has really let us down very bad. We have the doors constantly broken by squatters in the building, people moving in, sleeping in the hallways, defecating, the rented guards that are there and the ones that have, you know, very little training. They don't ask the people that are coming in for their names or anything. So we have junkies in the back lot, we have prostitution. Like I said, NYCHA, security is non-existent. We have cameras in the basement with nobody to monitor them. I wear I wear the NYCHA badge, I have the NYCHA emblem with pride. Not even in Queensbridge were we going through such conditions as this, that we're dealing with now. So basically, we've been just handed, we know, we've accepted the, basically accepted the RAD PAC thing because at least we have promises of an improvement in our conditions because we can't do anything, you know, that, that we just don't have the funds, or they're telling us we don't have the funds. There's so much that has to be done. This is a senior building, and they're putting us at risk. It's just unbelievable. Last night at 11:45, somebody walks in there with a big yellow suitcase and then has the nerve to say, "Oh, I guess I'm the youngest one here." And, you know, the guards ask them nothing. So this is the conditions that we're living in. So our promise is with RAD and PAC, that's what we have available right now.
In the process of conversion.
We're at the beginning process. We haven't really seen like the, what do you call it? No, we're starting out, we're in the very beginning process of it. You know, we're looking at buildings, we're looking at the developers, and we're going to work, but, you know, we're basically, there's nothing else for us to do there. We, I mean, with NYCHA, they just torn us apart.
And are you working with a specific organization, or who's walking you through this process, if you could explain what the engagement?
We're going to be working with Vantage. They're a consultant agency, but the whole, you know, the whole thing, the whole process is that NYCHA can't do anything for us. I mean, we have doors that a console be being broken, they're the electronic doors with the magnets. We can't do anything until they straighten out the, the problems within the building, and that's the, the squatters that are there. This is a senior building, we have like 20 apartments vacant, and I don't even want to know how many of the squatters are in the building.
Can you, for the record, tell us what development you're in?
The what?
What development are you in?
Oh, Melter, Melter Tower, it's of a senior residence in the Lower East Side.
We'll, we'll follow up with you offline.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
No, they're not. Preventive maintenance or whatever. Okay, and the police department is like kind of scattered, they're probably on the subways right now. It's true.
Raquel Tillyeva, I'm a staff attorney at the Tenants Rights Coalition at Manhattan Legal Services. We provide free legal services to low-income New Yorkers, and I specifically represent NYCHA tenants in housing court cases to resolve repair and rent area issues. During the course of my career, I have seen many issues that NYCHA tenants experience, which I will briefly summarize here. First, NYCHA fails to provide timely and adequate notice regarding the nature and timeline of repairs, with some tenants waiting up to three years for basic repairs, or up to a year with mold, or a year without a bathroom. NYCHA often closes repair tickets without doing the repair work or notifying tenants that the tickets were closed. Next, NYCHA fails to provide proper notice regarding building-wide repairs or outages, often NYCHA tenants wake up without hot water and there's no public notices that are posted. NYCHA fails to provide information and guidance about the mold on budsperson. Many NYCHA tenants are unaware of how to contact the mold on budsperson. Just as well, many RAD tenants are not aware that they can still access the mold on budsperson. Next, NYCHA fails to inform tenants how to resolve rent disputes through its newly administrative, new administrative grievance procedure. Most importantly, now that NYCHA has suspended a lot of the eviction proceedings, NYCHA tenants can no longer seek a rent abatement for lack of repairs and essential services. NYCHA fails to surprise tenants undergoing RAD conversions about the new ways that they can obtain repairs. Specifically, NYCHA tenants in the RAD program can now request HPD inspections by calling 301 like private tenants instead of waiting for a court order like other public housing tenants. It's important that they know this because these are part of their rights. And then finally, NYCHA fails to provide written notifications to tenants in languages other than English. One of my Spanish-speaking clients reports that at least three other tenants in her building only speaks Spanish as well. She was never given any notice in Spanish. I hope that this testimony will be one that the city council can take into consideration when making their policies. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony. We will follow up.
Thank you. We will now hear from Carmen Conones, Dana Eldon, Samantha Guzman. And again, please accept the unmute prompt when you receive it on Zoom. And we will also hear from Russell Taylor, Christina Chase, who I believe are present.
Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. First, I want to thank everybody for taking the time, you know, to really come here and, and talk about what's really going on. I think it's just so sad that we're in 2022, and we're still doing the same thing and talking about the same thing. And I think that what we need to really look at is elector officials, really, they really need to really get on their job because, you know, there's so many elected officials that are with this RAD PAC blueprint and stuff like that, and this is just really killing public housing. We're on the verge of literally, literally privatizing all of public housing and demolishing it at the same time. And people are being put out like it's going out of style. This is nothing new, it's been going on for years, it's just been packaged differently. When we talk about the 964 regs, I hope everybody does get savvy with it. We are trying to, I, I'm trying to, my best, I have been trying to get Resident Management Corporation, and that is that the residents get to do, are the ones that to, that can deliver their own services, looking at residents managing their own developments. I think we've been doing it for so long that nobody does it better than the residents. Resident engagement, we, we need to really, really look at that inside out. There's been problems with resident management for years, and what happens is, is they move them around, and, and, and nothing really gets solved, right? It's just like they say they got rid of Russ, Russ is still here, Greg Russ is still here. There's nothing wrong with Greg Russ, I like Greg Russ, I can work with Greg Russ. At least he doesn't lie to me.
Your time has expired.
And so, we really need to really be looking at Resident Management Corporation, please look it up. We are entitled to do that. And again, we need to make sure that, that, you know, that the New York City Housing Authority isn't also trying to run that. So there are different things we need to do. Residents, presidents need to stick together, back each other up. If one president is having a problem, then we all need to show up because that's the only way we're going to get this done. Nothing is going to get done if we keep being separated. And that is what New York City Housing has done and continues to do, is separate, separate, separate. But also, our council people and our state people and our congresspeople, they need to really look at what's happening when it comes to PAC, RAD, and the blueprint. And again, we still need to fix a lot of things on that preservation trust. There's things that we need to do. First of all, we were never engaged in any of these processes, and you're talking about our lives, you're talking about my grandchildren, you're talking about my great-grandchildren. That's a problem. That is a problem in itself when you are making decisions for me and mine, okay? When I stick my neck out every day, every day as a president, is a non, I tell you, this job is a thankless job, but we do it because we care, and that's the real reason we do it. It's not because we have to, because we don't have to. This actually has become abusive to, to the presidents. But again, I just want to say, I hope that this council, and I want to thank this, I want to thank you for holding this, councilwoman. I've been watching you for a long time, and you look like you are really on our side, and I appreciate you, I really do. But there's a lot of our elected officials that are selling us down the drain, and that's the biggest problem we have.
Ms. Quinones, thank you so much. Next resident?
Dana Eldon, followed by Samantha Guzman.
Thank you, Councilmember Aviles, and those in attendance. My name is Dana Eldon, I'm from St. Mary's Park Houses, I'm the resident council president there. As a resident, I'm thankful for the efforts of my resident engagement representative, Mrs. Williams, who has in the past been attentive to myself and my board, also taking time to clarify instructions for me to follow. However, in the recent year, there is little to no contact with my representative due to the fact that she has gotten another district to manage. However, there is no little, there's no little to no response to residents and how to approach 5013C nonprofit status or resident management. Secondly, regarding the voting process, the misinformation that is being shared with residents is not acceptable. I've been told that the 964 reg and regulations have been adopted by the trust. The 964 is signally designed to Section 9, and the fact that it is written into the trust law doesn't that satisfy me, that they have not acknowledged or respected the 964 rules or regulations from the beginning of the blueprint, which was 2020. The issue of voting with an acceptable 6% is criminal. There should be at least 66% of the development that is voting. Residents should be educated on the realities of their choice of Section 9 versus Section 8, participating in Section 8, the trust, and resident management, RAD, and PAC. This is not happening. The voting should be monitored and handled by an independent third party. The results should be made available public, to the public no later than 72 hours after any development has a voting process done at a development. Also, the marketing of new kitchens and bathrooms is also unacceptable. In many cases with RAD developments...
Thank you, your time has expired.
Could I finish, please? There are resident councils of those developments that cause better changes are just that, that there's little to none work done on the infrastructure such as electrical lines, plumbing, roofing, et cetera. Coming from a development that is 100% of its residency on a financial scale that was considered middle-class, we lived in an environment that was well-respected and secure. Since the mid-1980s, we have welcomed a total of 128 Section 8 residents. This development is 1,007 strong. This is a Section 9 development. To convert everyone would be an injustice to many working and retired professionals. It would also increase their rents due to the fact that many are residents, in fact, 1/3, that's 343, have Social Security and pensions. This would ruin them. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Eldon.
Thank you. We will now hear from Samantha Guzman, followed by Russell Taylor and Christina Chase.
Good afternoon. I'm a third-year law student at Fordham Law, and I've been working with a group of students and faculty in conducting research on public housing issues in New York City, including the new preservation trust. My colleagues and I wanted to use this opportunity to express our concerns with the trust's lack of resident involvement and give our recommendations to empower residents within the context of the trust. First, residents through their resident councils or tenant associations need to be full decision-making participants at all stages of redevelopment, including in the development plan and scope of work, the selection of builders, architects, and other vendors, and in the oversight and monitoring of their work. Residents through their councils or tenant associations must be made legal parties to key agreements in order to accomplish this. Second, residents need genuine opportunities to form RMCs to take on many aspects of operating their developments. This approach has been highly successful in other instances where RMCs have proven more accountable and effective, have provided decent jobs to many residents, and have given them some control over their living conditions. We recommend the creation of a NYCHA department responsible for leading the formation and operation of RMCs and to work and contracting with them. NYCHA needs to provide dedicated financial support for the establishment of RMCs and continue, and commit to a streamlined process for direct funding to those RMCs. To use these opportunities effectively, thirdly, residents and their resident councils and tenant associations need access to experts who can help them realistically assess options and learn the skills and develop the practical capacity for managing their projects successfully. Fourth, and finally, to guarantee their rights to participation, resident management, and involvement, along with other rights set out in the Act, the residents and the resident councils and tenant associations need access to an independent auditor or monitor, and finally, to be full legal parties to all agreements with the power to take legal action to enforce them if need be. We hope our research and recommendations will be taken into consideration to assist in empowering residents with regards to the trust and strengthening resident participation across the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for that testimony.
Yes, can you just turn on the microphone?
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Alexis Aviles. My name is Russell Taylor, I live at 830 Amsterdam Avenue, NYCHA resident, and I'm also recently elected county committee in the 69th Assembly District. As an activist, community engagement outreach specialist since 2007, I have participated in supervised street outreach by tabling and banners and handouts and going door-to-door, phone banking, attending Zoom meetings, and having informative, meaningful conversations with NYCHA residents and diverse community members supporting Section 9 public housing. We charge that the government through HUD, New York state legislative bodies, governor and New York City mayor are practicing social engineering and capital racism under the pretense of betterment for public housing residents, as was done throughout the 40s and 50s where white people living in public housing were guaranteed home loans through the FHA to move to rural and suburban areas and purposely excluded people of color from the same opportunity residing in public housing. Separate is not equal. I stand against the project-based vouchers. They do not protect the tenants, but actually protect NYCHA department and give NYCHA more money to mismanage. Ignorance is not bliss, only for insatiable predators looking to devour sadly 2 out of 10 people living in NYCHA that I've canvassed are not aware that they are even Section 9 low, moderate-income public housing, residents of public housing, or aware of its 964 legislation, empowerment, and promises to the residents meaningful involvement in management and operations of their development, forming resident management corporations of their own, list let alone continue to be used as mindless and cash cows. In my development, 830 Amsterdam Avenue, eight meetings since December have been missed. There's no way that my people in my building are going to make an informed decision whose responsibility to, since that resident council is malicious, is resident engagement's job to come out and see how they're doing, which they're not doing. So I had a garden destroyed in NYCHA. Do you know the problem I had to go through to one resident engagement in Queens, one resident engagement here, and they're not responding back at all for several months, whatever? And even I was the legal gardener, couldn't even get my garden agreement from my management or, or, or from NYCHA records department, and I'm, I'm looking forward to taking it in the court very soon. That's how bad it is with these people, and yes, I did speak to Brian Honan also, who's also a tenant, and they just have no regard for our rights. And, you know, superintendents, they know what's going to happen before it's happened, and why did they put me in place as the NYCHA resident in that place in which we're getting the heating and cooling system, and they had to destroy my garden? So I'm just saying, we need more oversight with resident councils, so that's why I am supporting Eddie Gibbs' reintroduction of 9414, giving resident, I mean, giving city council more oversight, and I do understand that the jurisdiction that, because the location, you, you know, it's a state entity, NYCHA is. So I'm going to stop it there, but thank you very much. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Christina Chase. I'm the second vice president over at Ravenswood Houses. NYCHA has not made any initiative to meaningfully engage Western Queens, including my development. There was one in-person town hall nearby at Queensbridge Houses, which, but it was canceled last minute. I'm a board member, and there has not been any direct outreach to our members. Virtual town halls, which include only a handful of residents, have been more about explaining NYCHA's plan rather than gathering important information for incorporation. Presentations and circulating literature... Presentations and circulating literature continuously frame Section 9 public housing as status quo, which is deceptive and fosters the belief that the trust or PAC are better options, which is not true. The trust completely transforms the finance and governance structures further away from the people who call NCHA home and into the hands of banks and undefined stakeholders, while PAC privatizes our homes via private management. I'm astounded that the trust has even got this far, considering the years of resident dissent. I implore you to watch or listen to the public hearings archived on NCHA's site. Majority of residents have said no to the blueprint, no to RAD and PAC, and no to the trust. However, NCHA continues to move forward with their agenda of establishing a real estate portfolio that can bring profit for private actors and money as well as power further away from residents. I moved into NCHA when I was six years old, and because of NCHA, I'm still, excuse me, I'm still here in New York City. Because of the housing security I experienced, I've been able to pursue my education to the highest levels and give back to my city. And I stand before you a few weeks shy of my 33rd birthday and about to give birth to my first child. And I hope to, excuse me, and I hope to raise my son in the same community that raised me, that protected me, that loved me. We need to protect NCHA so our families are not displaced. We need your help as public officials. We need you to stop NCHA from moving forward with policies that will harm us under the guise of helping us. We need you to redefine what accountability is by exemplifying it and standing by our side. Please utilize our voices and expertise as residents to stop NCHA from violating our rights and gambling with our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now hear from Mildred Martinez, Albert Negron, DJ Elf7, and Crystal Glover.
What number are you on, Mildred Martinez?
Anywhere. Oh, me? Hey, what's up? Nice to meet y'all. I'm DJ Elf7, New York City's number-one street activist. Nice to meet you. Now, I've been an activist for over 30 years. I was an activist during the Obama era when the RAD PAC was first instituted, and there's a reason why resident management councils are inside the 964 regs. It's because activists like me fought for that. It was a problem that was supposed to be made to give agency to people that are actually poor. Now, the fact of the matter is that today, there was this document that was presented. I don't know who this Uka Bugskiff person is, but this document is a problem. It is dishonest, and you pointed out a lot of issues with it, and you did a great job on that.
DJ, can you move closer to the mic?
Yeah, putting letters on doors, what about results? In school, results matter. In politics, results don't matter, unfortunately. It's just about connections. I dare you to run a survey right now to find out how people in public housing, how much they actually know about these issues. Now, the fact of the matter is that, let's look at the real estate industry, the number-one corrupting factor of New York City politics, right? The fact of the matter is that we look at the, what is it? The real estate agencies, they have HGL TV. They have a whole entire channel devoted towards pushing their needs. They have such commercial impact. How can small organizers like us compete? In fact, the fact, while all these guys back here are pulling a salary today and getting paid, right, yeah, let me tell you what I did. First of all, right, I did probably more tabling, family days tabling, than the rest of save Section 9 combined, because I'm super passionate of this issue. Another thing we can do is we can hang signs off the building. They have buildings that are by the East Side Highway by, you know, with huge real estate. We can hang signs off the building and let residents know, right, yeah? We can also, by the way, also, I worked on a program called Unified Platform 22. I had over 30 candidates across the nation breaking ranks with party leadership, and we had a unanimous agreement from candidates to support public housing. However, right, I know Greg Russ gets my emails, and there's proof of that, and I have, I can show you on my phone, the read receipts. The fact of the matter is that my work on this matter has been suppressed. An aristocracy of activist media and party leadership work to maintain the status quo. In fact, you know, let's talk about some of what's happened at these workshops. The fact of the matter is that how are residents getting value out of these workshops? You get this boring-ass presentation with nothing. In fact, what they really need is to have, when they're buying kitchen appliances from God knows who, right, yeah, or they're getting these services, right, like lead paint inspection, right? The residents should know what to look for or, you know, have some say in terms of they're changing the windows out instead of, and they buy these windows on discount, and then instead of actually fixing the mold, which goes for years unaddressed, right? They're just taking care of what benefits themselves. The fact of the matter is that management companies cannot be trusted. Let's look at the facts. Riseborough Management, who was paid off by the Democratic Party leadership, and also, we take a look at Theo Chino, whose work is in terms of addressing his building, management companies have swept in, and then they put a lot of, they took the building and they started getting a lot of loans on it, right? And then finally went to the residents who were living there, and they have to now pay off the mismanagement that was done by the resident company who's trying to be NCHA, who has been ranked number one as the worst landlord in the city for a long-ass time, right? These people cannot be trusted. And once again, if they're willing to work with people, why don't they get people like Marquez, the residents involved, right, yeah, with their decision-making, instead of paying themselves? That they should be incorporating us into the decision-making. That's absolutely not happening. So, once again, thank you very much. I rep my block. We're trying to work to get people in public housing to actually run for office, because if you will not help us, we will do the job ourselves. Thank you so much. I like you a lot, by the way. You're pretty cool. Thank you. I like you, Alexa.
Thank you, yeah.
How you doing? My name is Mildred Martinez, and I'm from Campos Plaza. I have a list of things, a lot of the things that have been said. I'm not going to repeat it, and I'm in favor of everything that was said, except for the NCHA section, okay? Because of the fact that I have been blacklisted. They don't talk about blacklisted. They don't talk about if you're too aggressive, and not aggressive in a negative way, but too assertive on what they're doing and questioning everything, they block you. And then when they rushed in the RAD on 2014, they were promised wooden floors, parquet floors, beautiful counters, cabinets, state-of-the-art appliances, right? A beautiful bathroom for $90,000 per apartment, right? Try going over there. They couldn't even send Campos Plaza 2 across two buildings to go see the beautiful supplies and equipments that they put in there, right? Because they didn't. And then Bill de Blasio got the nerve to say, "Oh, I apologize, something went wrong." Okay, so let's be accountable for the $90,000 times 250 that comes out to $22 million. Who stood with that money, okay? I put in a request for the freedom of information. They don't have not one document on Campos Plaza 1. Where did all that money go to? That's one, okay? And then when I started complaining about everything that was being put in public with the pictures, just videos, just this, just that, but you can't ask any questions. The majority of the people that were fooled into signing their petition because NCHA residents and NCHA has to come aboard as a team, and we're not a team, okay? I can show you the videos. They had rushed in now, 2021, into Campos Plaza to rip off Campos Plaza 2 because they're running out of time, afraid for all the processes that are coming into play, right? And now they're asking for $145,000 apartments. But before I go to that, I did my own research in 2014, at the same time that Campos Plaza was being renovated. I did the same, I looked into the research of Styverson, that is just across the street. They paid for a total renovation, $40,000 per apartment. Now, you tell me, what did they do in Campos Plaza 1 when Campos Plaza is prime real estate? It is the last one, the last of the Mohicans that have been made. So, why would they pay them so much money? And the only thing that they actually delivered for 205 was the internal, the central air? They didn't tell them that your bill was going to get up higher. They didn't tell them of all the changes that they were going to go through. They didn't tell them how many people were going to be evicted. They didn't say anything about the parking spaces that have been taken over and being given to the private sector, okay? They come in and out. We have a gate, which I have pictures if you want to see. I'm constantly closing the gate because it's supposed to be protecting the rights of the livelihood of these young kids that play in front of our building. They leave it open. People think that they can just zoom right through. But that's another, another, another story, right? In regards to the blacklisting, good, rather, the RADS, okay? They can't stand me because I intervened in 2014. I'm doing it again in 2021 with New York City Housing Authority, Campos Plaza 2. They are selling them the bridge, okay? And they have misinformed everybody. Everybody thinks they're going to buy their apartment when I was taking a survey to see how many people would be willing to get their families together and purchase their apartment or go into the management incorporation. They don't want you to know anything about it, okay? And that's the sad part. Because of the fact that they misinformed, I called Greg Russell, and I sent him a letter. I even put an investigation on them as well. I put it through the Inspector General. How do I get an answer for that? I know that they should have called you and probably threw it out, okay? But that's another story to that. When I went to the meetings, they rushed in September, exactly, September the 16th, 2021. They started the meeting, and we were like, okay. So then I'm trying to get some questions out. Oh, no, no, no. Oh, they'll get a group of people to start yelling and screaming. They had, I had a group of people that were in favor of what I was doing. They don't even go to the meetings because they're intimidated at the way they were acting with me, and I'm assertive enough to stand up and be counted. They said, "No, Mildred, I don't want to get involved with that. I see how they try to block you." They're not strong enough to stand up and fight, okay? But the sad part to all this, in the meetings, public meetings, you can't speak because they only want you to see what's on the television, right? And then on the website, rather, on the Zoom, they clock you off. And I'm like, I want to speak. And I'm sending them a message. They clock you off. So, how exactly is it that they're being engaging with the residents? They're not. It's a nice wool, pull, wool over everybody's head. All the residents are afraid to speak up. And then when you're too vocal, they blacklist you. They took me to court on 2018, okay? Because I said, I was the president for 15 years in Campos Plaza, and the majority of the things that I did was out of pocket because they, oh, the monies are not there. Oh, we have to get back to you. Oh, this and that and that. I didn't have time to wait, okay? So, I took it out of my pocket. Eventually, when it comes, I'll get it back. Never got it back. That's one. So, what happened to that budget? And how did they turn it over? And then another thing, when it came down to, and I'm sorry, this is very important for you to put it down. The grade that they should get is FF minus minus. And the resident engagement is controlling of the tenant association in Campos Plaza that did not know which way to go. And I kept sending her information so she can read and get herself into part. They don't want her to be. So, she goes along with the program. Not everybody's in favor of selling out Campos Plaza. And I'm sorry, when you said, "Oh, we can't do anything about it," I was really sorry to hear that because I want to stop the RAD right now in Campos Plaza. And not only that, I would like for you to put an investigation on them because somebody's getting paid behind closed doors, and it isn't the residents of Campos Plaza, okay?
So, Ms. Martinez, thank you for your passion. And I didn't want to cut you off, given your experience.
Let me tell you that I won the case.
Hold on, let me tell you one thing. At no point do I ever want to convey that the residents cannot make changes. There is nothing, nothing set in stone. And I believe in resident power. I believe in people power.
I convinced the whole entire building.
So, if I convey that at any point, that is not, that is not the message that I am ever wanting to convey. I do believe in people power and the ability to transform, even in the most difficult circumstances.
They need to be investigated.
So, I will follow up with you offline, and I appreciate your patience and you being here all this time. I know this is a burden for working-class people to sit here all day, to wait for their moment, so I appreciate all that you offered.
And I want to say thank you to you and Baron. What's his name? I'm sorry, Baron. He expressed himself so well, and I feel so, I'm so glad that I waited to the very end because I feel it in my bones that it's going to work with you two guys. Working as a team is going to happen, okay? Because they're not going to be able to sugarcoat and get their way because they're working for New York City Housing Authority. There used to be the lines of communication working alongside of the residents and the, but when I took the head of New York City Housing Authority, resident, no, the resident, she was before the resident engagement, it used to be called-
Community Operation.
Community Operation. I pulled out the Director of Community Operation because it turned out that she was a favor of Sheldon Silver, and I want this on record. She was the cousin of Sheldon Silver. She, he, Sheldon Silver asked Giuliani for a favor, and he needed his cousin to get a top-notch job for $125,000. At the end, she got more than $200,000 to only find out when I put my name on the community room, I said, "I don't want a new floor because we have parquet. We could sand it down, shellac it, and we have a new floor." Do you know that she wanted $49,000 for that? And it turned out that her family was the owner of the floor.
Ms. Martinez, con todo repito-
Okay, I'm sorry. I can go on or not.
We will, we will follow up offline.
Yes.
Thank you. And to the last, to the last speaker of today's hearing, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Am I pronouncing your name right? Aviles? Thank you for allowing me to speak. This is very personal, what I'm getting ready to say. I called, good day. I called Resident Engagement Director Gina Watkins in October 2021. I wanted to serve on my Washington Houses resident council. I was the president back in 2012, so I knew the value of an association. Gina Watkins said to the board that was at, was at that, the board that was there from 2016 to 2019. She told them to carry on in their position because with COVID-19, it pushed a lot of stuff back. If they wanted to stay in position, fine. Ms. Watkins also said that HUD was waiving the bylaws and that elections had to take place as soon as possible for residents 18 and over to vote. So, on November 29th, 2021, elections took place at Washington Houses. Not one tenant came out to vote. The, oh, everybody, including me, got in unopposed. Resident engagement hadn't gotten back to me in December, December 21. So, I called, December, the day 21. So, I called them. By January, the buildings were posted saying who the new board was. As a financial secretary, I asked the president. I sent emails. I text. That's one point I forgot to bring up. Unfortunately, Washington, unfortunately, some of Washington Houses board members and myself have misunderstandings from the past that have not been resolved, have not been resolved. So, when I became the financial secretary, I was concerned about like Juneteenth programs and youth programs. I was concerned as financial secretary. I wanted to see, I wanted to see receipts. I wanted to see information because, for instance, for the Juneteenth program, as a board member, I wasn't even included in the planning, okay? The president, I'm not going to say no names out of respect. They all planned all these programs, and I'm on board. As of January 1st, 2022, I became financial secretary. So, I had a right to that information that I asked for. I felt like I was being excluded from the board because I would send the president texts, emails. I said all that already. Resident engagement, okay, I called resident engagement. I got Janil Hudson. I got Uka Bascas. She said to Watkins, "How can I help?" I told her my situation. She said- She said she would send a letter to Washington Houses president asking for any correspondence that she made to reach out to me. She gave her 30 days. The 30 days passed. I kept emailing resident engagement. Erica DeJesus, who Ms. Watkins put to assist me, was supposed to follow up with me. She didn't. Next thing I know, a very disturbing list of accusations were made on me from Washington Houses resident association president that were lies. Washington Houses board proceeded to have a meeting to have me removed from office. What am I trying to prove? Resident engagement left me high and dry. Instead of following through, they gave existing board members time to work up their trumped accusations, which are filthy and disgusting lies, and that they couldn't prove any of it. And at the removal meeting, at the removal meeting for the tenants, resident engagement and the C-COP of presidents were present. At that meeting, instead of bringing up the filth that they claim I did, like exposing my body to her daughter, the president said this, "I pulled a knife on her." Why you didn't call a cop if I pulled a knife on you? All this filth was being said about me because the board did not want me to sit because of past situations we had when I was president. I'm bringing it home. Give me a minute. Okay, so what did they do? They can't prove that I pulled a knife. They can't prove that I showed my body because it didn't happen. So, they brought up an issue with a neighbor that I had that lived on top of me. He's dropping cinder blocks on my head and constantly dropping stuff on my head. I put in tickets. I contacted manager. I told my housing assistant, mind you, this tenant used to give me money to go to Pathmark to buy his son's birthday cake. That's how long ago it was because Pathmark been closed forever.
Are you bringing it home?
Okay, I'm bringing it home.
Final sentence?
And what did the Washington Houses resident council do?
Nothing.
By spying on me, they put that information. They took the paper that I left on the guy's door telling him to stop dropping heavy objects on my head. Okay, I'm bringing it home. January...
Last seconds, and I would love to receive your testimony after.
The thing about it is, I had every right, I had every right as a resident to be on that board. If resident engagement really wanted to help, they could have fought for me. Gina Watkins from resident engagement said that if we couldn't get along as a board, there'll have to be another election. Resident engagement council president are really, resident engagement and the district council of presidents don't have a clue what's going on with the residents. They only cater to the presidents. They only cater to the boards. And if you have a board that's not efficient with bringing information, I'm not insinuating that that's what my president is doing, but if you have a president like that, if you have a board like that, lots of information is not getting back to the resident. Resident engagement, there is so much more than I would like to say. This was personal for me because I served Washington Houses from 2011 to 2015, and we got along good. Corinne, Claudia, and all of us got along good, but because somebody gave me some clothes, he gave me the clothes. And one thing leading to another, it blew everything out. Everything started getting stupid and getting messed up.
So, Ms. Glover...
On that note, resident engagement really don't know what they're doing. And even worse, the council of presidents, because there's no way, if I was still president, there's no way that there'd be rats because me, the president, we all live in the same building. I can guarantee you, that monstrosity that our superintendent built outside our building was because I met with him. I had meetings with him. I sat back there for how many hours? Give me one more minute.
Ms. Glover, we have an event.
I sat with that superintendent, and he built that thing because of me meeting with him. I had meetings in my building that they didn't want me to have. I'm talking about the president, Corinne, they didn't want me to have those meetings, but I had to have them because they weren't doing anything.
Thank you, Ms. Glover.
And because of that, I'm blacklisted. But you know what? I don't care if I ever get back on the tenant association because guess what? I'm a tenant, I will always be involved.
Right. Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you. And with that, the meeting...
Thank you so much for letting me speak.
The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, darling, for letting me speak.